Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Monday, March 20th, 2023 Board of Commissioners meeting. I'll call this meeting into order, and the first item on the agenda tonight is the invocation and pledge of allegiance. Mr. Paul O'Neal said he would lead us this evening in a invocation and pledge of allegiance, so I'd like to invite him up.
Thank you, and any of you that's ever been in the military understand when you get volunteered, so, thank you. Let us pray. Father, we thank you for this day that you bestowed upon us with the sunshine and the warmer temperatures on the way. We ask, Father, that tonight you will bestow wisdom upon the commissioners as they make decisions that affect the citizens that live in Currituck County. We ask that you give them discernment and just wisdom, Father, as we move forward, and we thank you for the state that we live in, this county, and this nation, Father, and we pray that you will continue to bestow your blessings upon us, and we ask these things in your son's name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. And I did ask, you could have said no. It wasn't a request. All right. Next item up is our ethics awareness and conflict of interest reminder, and our county attorney will be handling that for this evening.
Pursuant to GS 153A-44, a commissioner has a duty to vote on matters coming before the board but may be excused from voting on issues involving the commissioner's own financial interest, official conduct, or on matters on which the commissioner is prohibited from voting under GS 14-234 or 160D-109. In accordance with Chapter 2, Division 3 of the Currituck County Code of Ordinances, it is the duty of every commissioner to avoid both conflicts of interest and appearances of conflict. Does any commissioner have any known conflict of interest or appearance of conflict with respect to any matters coming before the Board of Commissioners in this meeting? If so, please identify the conflict or appearance of conflict.
Ms. Chairman, on PB 22-24, I have a vested interest in property that is included in that request, so with that, I will be asking to be recused from the matter when it comes up.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Anything else from any other members? All right. Next up is the approval agenda. Do we have any changes this evening to the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I make a motion to add a closed session pursuant to GS 143-318 Point 11A3 to consult with the county attorney and preserve the attorney-client privilege, and once again, after the administrative reports.
Okay, so that'll be after administrative reports and before we go into a public hearing. It's a little bit of an odd duck this evening, folks. We're going to go into a closed session to consult with the attorney before we jump into the public hearing to clear up a couple of things, and so we'll beg your forgiveness as we step out of the room at that time and consult with her and then come back in for the rest of the agenda in that public hearing matter. Up next-
Do you have a second on that motion?
Thank you. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Up next is a public comment. We have Mr. James Memm signed up again this evening. As always, if you come up for public comment, please state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes to say your piece, and the lights will tell you when you're out of time.
Good evening. My name is James Memm. 105 Chestnut is my address. Good evening, Board. I hope it's becoming apparent that this is very important to me. This is the greatest community, but will only remain great if we remember it's the citizens that matter most, and I don't care how big any homeowners association is thought to be, the will of the people will reign supreme. I want to address the impact fees in correlation to what was spoken at the previous meeting. These fees, excuse me, would help protect the existing tax-paying local community from having to shoulder the additional cost of added public services from new developments. Request of the voters and the residents should not be answered with "this will never happen." I ask that each of you think of these requests of mine and my fellow brothers and sisters from the mindset of, "I'm here to fulfill their request. This is a need, not a want. It must be strived for. Are we going to wait until the last farm market shuts down before we do something? Impact fees are a solution, but we can't keep kicking the can down the road. With that said, one, frost homes is only wanted by those moving here, not those living here. All of these new subdivisions are being built are not coming here for you and me. They're being built for the people fleeing the very overgrowth we're beginning to see. It's not beautiful, it's not wanted, it's not affordable. Two, I do understand that these impact fees may become reflective on the future buyers. So be it. An impact fee shall be imposed in correlation with what exactly was stated at the previous meeting, but let's use more reasonable calculation. $2,000 on a roughly $50,000 home, itemized on a buyer-seller agreement. Now take that correlation and impose that same percentage of fee to a $350,000 home, making it a $364,000 purchase price with a $14,000 impact fee to the community, itemized on a buyer-seller agreement. The buyer is understanding with that purchase, the impact fee is to be utilized for the impact their home brought to this county. This again means this does not affect the current residents of this county already living here because we own our homes. It affects those making the conscious decision to move here and accept the impact they're bringing to the county without yet contributing. Builders are erecting entire communities for them, not you and me. I own my home. If a county can manage what residents do with their lots and homes, a county budget, and what's allowed on residents' lots and lands, then I know it can be easily controlled how the county manages impact fees to its builders. Unfortunately, amending the Udo is the only way, or else committee members are only one vote away from allowing another development like the ones recently erected. I'm here to make sure this doesn't happen again. We must increase the minimum lot size to five acres, impose impact fees to builders according to lot and home assessed value before construction, and begin holding these builders accountable. God forbid these builders don't sell a few homes, and God forbid, once the big guy loses. It's about that time. Thank each of you.
Thank you. All right. I have Robert Albury.
Good evening, sir.
Yes, sir. I'm Robert Albury. I'd like to address ladies and gentlemen of the Board. My wife and I live at 102 Quarter Landing Court, Harbinger. I'd like to discuss our road. It's about 150 yards long. We have 13 homes on it. We have 58 potholes. Some of them are the size of a car hood. We'd like to ask the Board to consider this, to stabilize in Quarter Landing Court. I've discussed it with the state DOT. They said if the county will stabilize the road, then they will take it over and maintain it. And if anybody on the Board got time one day would like to ride up there and ride down that road?
I drive past it every day. I'm your neighbor. I live on Reggie Owens.
You live on Reggie Owens, yes. Quarter Landing, butts end of Reggie Owens. That road is terrible. It's part of Cypress Point 1 subdivision. I don't know how long it's been there, but that subdivision's been there a long time.
Since 1989.
Right, and that road is terrible. And like I said, the state said if the county will stabilize it, they will maintain it. So I ask that the Board consider and approve stabilizing Quarter Landing Court. Like I said, it's about 150 yards long, got 13 homes on it.
Is that road, is it paved now and it's got potholes in the pavement? Is that what's going on?
Right. It's paved now, and I don't know if it's ever been paved since it was first paved.
Right. It probably hasn't, so one of the problems we have in this county, or in all counties in North Carolina, is counties are prohibited from maintaining roads. We cannot do it. It is either a private road dedicated for public use, or it is a road that DOT has taken over. My home is on a private road, and we, the five neighbors in that subdivision, have to pave that road ourselves.
Well, I would consider this road to be used for public use.
It is, but it's still a private road. In other words, the people that live on that road probably own that road, or the developer owns the road, and it's gone now.
It's public.
It is public road. It's a DOT road.
It's a DOT road.
Well, then, then we can have a conversation with DOT about paving your road if it is accepted into their program.
I went to DOT and discussed it with them.
Okay.
It is not a DOT road.
And it's private. It doesn't say private on it. It says-
It doesn't have to. But-
What if it didn't want to say an FR on it? It's a state road.
Right. It'll have an SR on the sign.
Reggie Owens.
It's a PBT on the road signs.
Right.
But they don't have a homeowners association in phase one.
We don't either, and ours, when you ordered the sign-
Well, and you know, and I live in a private development, and we don't have an HOA either, and my whole road is full of potholes, and DOT won't fix it until the homeowners fix the road.
Right.
Right. That's what DOT told us.
It's an ongoing problem everywhere in the county.
The county will stabilize the road, they will take over and maintain it.
It's actually illegal for us to do that. We can't use public funds to put towards a private road. We can't take somebody's taxes from over here and put it on the road.
Well, what about the 13 homes on Quarter Landing that's paying probably well over $200,000 a year in taxes?
Well, those are-
Through the county.
Right. Those are, that's different, though. Those are used for things that are approved by the state. We can only do what the state allows us to do as a government body. It is a terrible situation. We hear about it a lot. Ditches are another problem. We can't fix ditches in people's, you know, communities as well unless you're in a service district to do that.
Go to ditches. Two years ago, when we moved in, I don't know if you want to call it the ditch or not.
Probably not.
But the county required us to put in juggins for our driveway.
Right.
But there's no ditch there.
That's because they've been filled in over the years.
They've silted in over the years. They've been filled in.
Phase one, that's one of the problems with the flooding of both on Teed Court and Quarter Landing.
Yeah, Teed Court is just as bad as-
Because the ditches have been filled in, the purpose of those ditches is drainage, and if the ditches don't drain, then they go into your yard, into your road, and that undermines the integrity of the road. That's part of the problem.
Well, with the ditch, their Quarter Landing is supposed to drain out to Reggie Owens. But when we have hard rain, I go out there and look at the ditch, and it's draining from Reggie Owens.
That's because the ditches haven't been maintained all the way to Reggie Owens. There's no consistency of those ditches.
So if the county won't take control of it-
We can't. It's won't. It's not a won't, it's a can't.
Okay, so does it go back to the developer?
Ultimately, it's going to go back to the homeowners to maintain the ditches in front of their property.
Well, I'm talking about the road, too.
The road as well is yours. You have to maintain it. You have to maintain it, and it's not anything we can do about it. We hear about it. We would love to be able to help people out, because we hear about it quite a bit up here as commissioners, and we are creatures of the state, and what they tell us, we can and cannot do, and that is one of the things we cannot do.
I don't understand why the state-
They took over roads.
-told us that if the county will stabilize the road, they will take over it.
They can't. They just, they've got some of their information wrong. We are not allowed to do that. We just cannot do that, period. I wish there was a better answer for you, but there isn't.
I wish I knew if the state was making a comment.
So we'd have to, I mean, we can check with the state and see what they're talking about. Do you know who you talked to?
Who'd you talk with?
The sign that the corner of the road on Reggie Owens does say SR.
Right. Okay.
On Quarter Landing Court, it just says Quarter Landing Court. It does say private or anything.
Right. Somebody just put the sign up, probably the original developer, but didn't bother putting private on it. If it's a state road, like I said, it says SR on it.
I think when the development's done, that the county will put up the initial sign, I think, even on private development.
We had to buy ours.
Did you? Okay. I thought they did.
And we put, actually, you had to buy two, because the first one already existed somewhere else in the county.
Put PBT on it.
But did you know who you talked to at the site?
I talked to the engineers in Elizabeth City.
And they're used to Pasca Tank.
Yeah.
They probably think we're-
Or Elizabeth City.
They shouldn't be just Pasca Tank, Elizabeth City. I mean, we talked to state.
Right. Well, so the problem is cities and towns, they maintain their roads. They can do that. They're a little different animal than a county. So if they're thinking in those terms in Elizabeth City, the city itself maintains its roads. That's why they're pretty bad in there as well. So they may be thinking in those terms that we would do that, but we don't.
Okay, like Ms. Jarvis said, that it's been a Cypress Point 1, has been there since 89?
Yes.
Well, who knows the developer? He may have passed on by now.
That's long gone. That's long gone. So it's gonna, ultimately, it's going to be up to the 13, you say 13 or 15 people that live on that road to fix it.
13 homes and families.
That would have to get together and contract with a paving company to fix that road. And if you bring it up to DOT standards, you can apply to have it accepted into their program, and they will maintain it going forward.
It's a long process.
But it's a long process, and the paving has to match DOT standards. The ditches would have to be repaired. It is a very long, expensive process.
And I would be happy to talk to my neighbors with you in phase one if I'll give you my card if you would like me to discuss this with them. I don't mind doing that. Like I said, I'm your neighbor. I live a half mile from you, not even that.
Yeah, I've discussed it with a number of my neighbors there, and they're all for it. They said they're sick and tired of bumping in and out to get home.
Right.
And you almost need a four-wheel-drive vehicle to go down it. I've seen better-maintained gravel roads than what we have in front of our home.
Yep. It is a problem throughout this county, in many counties in the state, I would wager. So if you'd like Ms. Jarvis's help, she'd be glad to come down and meet with all of y'all down there if you'd like to.
Oh, yeah. We would handle it.
Get her business card, and she's your representative for that district.
Thank you. Okay.
Okay.
All right, well, we'll see where it goes from here.
Yes, sir.
You'll obviously me back again.
That's okay. We don't mind. We don't mind at all.
All right, y'all have a good evening.
Thank you, sir. You, too.
Bless you.
All right. That was the only people I had sign up this evening. Is there anyone else in the audience that got here late that would like to speak at public comment this evening? All right, seeing none, I will close public comment. We will move on to Commissioner's report, and I'll kick it off to my right this evening with Commissioner Beaumont.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I got nothing tonight.
Okay. Short and sweet. Commissioner Cord.
First day of spring today. It feels like winter, but a lot of stuff going on in the county. First off, Butch Petry was a commissioner from 2008, I believe? No, 2010 to 2014. Butch lives in Grandy, very active in the community. He was a huge part in starting Backpack for Kids, which feeds underprivileged children in the county at the elementary school level. You'll have a child go home that doesn't have food in their home because maybe poverty, maybe mom and dad aren't the best parents. So Butch was very big on advocate of that. We probably feed between the five elementary, six elementary schools, we probably feed over 100 and some kids, and it's discreetly done. The sheriff's office actually assists with that. We take the boxes of the food where a child gets some nutritional stuff as well as some good foods. Butch was a caring individual and was a great commissioner for the four years that he was here, had a heart of gold. He'll argue with this piece of wood right here, because, but he is a good guy, and the main reason why I was bringing that up, his wife passed last week, and just condolences for him. She's a former FBI agent, super-nice lady, good people, live here in the county, have lived here for a long time, so just condolences to him. I know he's going through some tough times. On a positive note, this weekend, our H2OBX had a big fundraiser for Special Olympics, which the county, our law enforcement slash public safety, I don't want to leave anybody out, public safety team raised the most money. Currituck County, you can't not raise the most money in your own backyard. You'd kind of look bad. So, but we raised over almost 15 grand for Special Olympics, which if anybody's partaked in any of that, you know, when they have the different events at the high school and for the torch run, it's very rewarding. So I participated in that, and I probably should have went to the GOP convention, because that water was cold, but like I said, it was a good fundraiser. I'd do it again, like I said, and it was a great crowd for a great cause, and that's what, you know, there is a lot of great things that happen here in the county. So that's pretty much it for me. There's a bunch of events. Just follow social media. The county does a great job on the website. Randall puts out tons of good stuff, so just follow the county for events and everything, and be safe, and hopefully warmer weather's coming, because it is the first day of spring, and it feels like it's 35 outside.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Athers?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I'll be short. I, too, served with Butch, and Wanda was a wonderful lady. I always enjoyed talking with her and appreciated input and advice she would give me at times. Kevin is right. We do live in a great county, and I've heard nothing but kudos about the Citizens Academy. I've talked to several people that have been attending it. I encourage people to look into the next round that's coming up, maybe next, there was some talk about having it, it may be in the fall, so hopefully we can pull that off, and by all means, people should attend that, because it gives you a good background about what actually Currituck County government is all about and the services we provide. And just a case in point, they went through the Communications Center and Public Safety Building last week, and one of the attendees told me that they were absolutely amazed at the technology that Currituck County has to better serve the citizens in times of need. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Mr. payment?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I'd just like to mention that Currituck County, along with other individuals, attended a ceremony, I believe it was March 7th, for Staff Sergeant Chris Burrell. He was a wounded veteran, had his leg taken amongst some other injuries, and an organization led up by Jared Allen, it's the Jared Allen Homes for Wounded Warriors Program. He's a retired football, pro football player, and he's been a pro bowler. His family was in the military for years, and he wanted to do something for veterans and wounded warriors, to give back to them and provide them with a home, customize home to their disabilities. So everyone's different, everyone meets the needs, and you go on a waiting list, and when you're chosen, you get to choose the location where you would like to live. And Staff Sergeant Burrell was from Virginia, but he chose Currituck County because Currituck County has so much to offer. He said, "A great place to live, the stuff that Currituck County has." So they came in from out west, I believe, Arizona or somewhere's out, I believe it was, but they came in and got a bunch of local contractors and picked a spot in Grandy and built a nice home for them that we were able to tour. I know Town Bank Sandy was there, the YMCA was there, myself, Selena Jarvis attended, along with other people. I just wanted to publicly say thank you to the local contractors that gave their time and efforts to help make this dream come true for Staff Sergeant, to give back something little for what he gave for our country. And this is the second home that I know of that we've done this in Currituck County, one up closer to Nap, and it's just, it's great to see the happiness for the family and everybody involved, and it was a good time. The home was immaculate, and again, I just hope we could do that for a lot more wounded warriors in our area. Anything we can do to help them is, like I said, they give a lot for us, for our freedom. And last, I just wanted to say, you know, the fire departments really need your support. They need volunteers. They keep putting the word out. They have fish fries, they have fundraisers. Just show up, make a phone call, they could use your support out there. Remember, this is a volunteer program, volunteer, well, most are volunteer firefighters, and we have three of them right now, but they need your support. They give up a lot. I was active in volunteer fire department when I could, a little less now, but getting that page, getting that call, going out at any times of the night to help your neighbors, fight fires, whatever you need, it takes a lot, and I commend every one of them, first responders, Sheriff's Department, everybody out there, that what they do to protect our citizens, and the more support you can give them, the better it'll be for all of our community out here, and that's all I have this evening.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Jarvis.
Thank you. I'll just give an amen to Kevin with the day being the first day of spring, and it's still feeling like winter, and I do hope you're right, that warmer weather is on the way. Also, I would just like to thank Staff Sergeant Chris Burrell for choosing Currituck County. We appreciate his sacrifice and his service, and we're glad he chose us. I would like to, first of all, say that we attended and held our first opioid settlement task force meeting on the 13th of March. This is a group of volunteers are service-minded, and they are going to be helping shape the county's decisions on how we spend our opioid settlement money to best help our citizens and to make those dollars go as far as possible. I want to thank our staff especially, County Manager Ike McCree, for the presentation and the orientation he did for this board. It just set the tone so well as to what the group is about, and then we buckled down and began charting a path forward for our subsequent meetings. Our next meeting is at the end of April, and I just want to thank, once again, everybody who's willing to make this task force successful in the months to come. And finally, on that same note, I'm going to put my civics teacher cap on for just a second and encourage, you've heard a lot already, how you can get involved. I encourage you to join the Citizens Academy. It is a wonderful program that our staff puts on, and I'm thrilled at how that program has developed. Sign up for an advisory board. A lot of you are here at the meetings. If you're listening from home, come to the board meetings, and let your voice be heard, because this is truly your chance to direct and help the county move forward. And then I just want to say my condolences to former Commissioner Butch Petry on the loss of his wife, too, and just that I want Commissioner Kitty Etheridge to know how much, very much, I miss her, and I wish her well in her recovery. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Jarvis. I'll probably be a little bit long-winded. I usually seem to do that for some reason, but, right? It's good stuff. Butch Petry, I talked to him this afternoon, actually. He said he was finishing up the obituary for his wife, Wanda, and would be posting, they would be putting that information out soon for services, will be held April 15th in Norfolk, I believe, he said. So that'll be out soon. Butch worked for me for a while. When he was a commissioner, on his last year, he came and worked for me and did wild horse tours in Krolla, and became a very good friend, a mentor to me, and taught me a lot about what to do. what to do and what not to do as a commissioner. So I thank him for his counsel over the years and his continued friendship to this day. On to other stuff, it's a little bit better news, I think. Last week, myself, Ike, myself and Ike, the county manager, met with Dr. Lutz and Dwan Kraft to discuss the schools' needs going forward. We met with numerous times with the schools over the last five years to discuss facility maintenance plans. This board has asked the school to take a hard look at what is needed and what is wanted and to break those two things down into a digestible and understandable form. I would like to thank Dr. Lutz and his staff as well as the school board for their efforts to do this very thing. Many of our school buildings are quite old and in need of upgrades and repairs. This can only be accomplished if we both know and understand what it is that we and they need. We first met, when we first met, the facility studies came back as a frankly unattainable number for us to be able to manage. It was, it was an astronomical number of things that needed to be done to our buildings. Dr. Lutz and his staff have greatly reduced this number and have truly dug deep to separate the wheat from the chaff and get us down to something we can manage. As many people know, we're doing upgrades and expansions to several of our school buildings at this time. This list is in addition to those changes, which did not capture the needs of the other buildings that house our students. Just so people are aware of the age of our schools and why this is so important to address in a timely fashion, I'm going to share the age of all of our schools. Central Elementary was built in nineteen fifty. Knott's Island was built in nineteen twenty-five. Moyack Elementary was nineteen forty-one. Shawboro is the new one at two thousand and eight. Griggs Elementary was nineteen forty-one. Currituck Middle nineteen seventy-six. Moyack Middle two thousand and two. JP Nap nineteen sixty and Currituck High School in nineteen ninety-eight. In addition to the schools, the central office, outbuildings, parking lot, athletic fields and facilities all need attention. I think we can all agree that having top-notch facilities for our students should always be foremost in our plans and going forward. They are a reflection of our commitment to our students and the future generations of this county. As we look to open a new school in the coming years, the school system has taken it a step further and forecast financial needs of staffing for this new facility. The positions forecast are not state-covered positions. People often ask, why do you wait until schools are busting at the seams? We have trailers in use and it seems the kids are going to fall out of the windows at any minute because we're shoving them in there. The reason is, we have to make sure that we have enough students to go into that school. And that seems like an easy answer, but it's really not. Duplication of services is a big part of this. We don't want to open a school and have it a quarter full and doing so, we put all the other services in place to run it and it's very expensive. So when we open a new school, we have to have everything that the other school has that's full, but we've only got a quarter of the kids there and it's the same cost to maintain that school and run that school with only a partial amount of students in it. In this case, the forecasted amount to open, the new school will be one point, about one point three million. It's a little less than that, but by the time we get it open in a couple of years, the way inflation's going, it's probably going to be about a million three. This includes staff and operational costs of this new building. This is the reason for us wanting to build a school that will house seven hundred and fifty or more children. The school system wanted to do a smaller school of like five hundred and fifty kids. We said, no, we need a much bigger school to deal with this. That way, we're not building another school. The cost of a school right now is going to be probably somewhere in the forty, fifty million dollar range. We're working through that right now to figure out what that total cost is going to be. Few years ago, it was going to be half that cost. So with inflation, we decided to err on the side of caution, build a much bigger school to meet our needs for a much longer period of time rather than happen to open another school sooner. All told, the schools are projecting to need approximately thirty-five million dollars over the next five years. Now that is needs and wants. They broke those two things out. There are needs that they have to have and there are wants that they would like to have and they have been separated out. Each year, it's a couple million dollars going forward at each school, just to fix roofs, HVAC equipment, very essential things to these schools and maintaining them. It is important to point out what does, it is important to point out who does what in the schools as well. We often hear that the county should do this, the county should do that, the school should do this, the school should do that. We, the county, build the buildings and pay for their maintenance. We give the schools the money to do the maintenance as they are the ones that are actually in the schools and they have their own maintenance people there. It's kind of a weird system where we build it and then hand it over to them and then we have to pay to maintain it even though we're not in it, but that's the way North Carolina is. As I mentioned in my comments several weeks ago, we have many financial challenges facing Currituck County. In the coming weeks and months, we'll be working through those challenges in my discussions with the manager. We've had discussions about how to explain some of the tax stuff in our tax bill. Each year when we go through a budget process, the manager comes up and he has graphs and he shows everything and talks about our budget, but by the time it comes to paying your tax bill, you probably don't remember any of that if you actually watched that meeting or took part in that meeting. Those meetings are all open to the public. Our work sessions are all open to the public. It would be great if we could see people turn out to that and understand the challenges that we face and the decision we make and the reason we make them and hopefully take those back out to the community and talk about the challenges that we're faced with at these times. So one of the discussions we had was breaking down some of the tax rate. Schools do this, fire does this, et cetera, et cetera. One of the problem is, people will sometimes think, well, I don't want to pay a fire tax or I don't want to pay a school tax, I don't have kids in the school anymore. Well, that's not the way it works, even though I don't have a child in the school, I still have to pay for the future generations of schools. So there's been some resistance to that for these reasons, but I would guess that that's probably a smaller number than a larger number. But however, if we do that, that is up to this board of commissioners to decide. It's just an idea I postulated with him to see about letting people know how their money is spent in the tax bill and break it out a little bit better. For instance, the schools account for twenty-four percent of our current forty-six percent tax rate. So it's about fourteen million dollars goes to them, went to them the last year just to pay for schools. Thirty-eight percent of the money that you pay in your taxes, your property taxes, goes to public safety. This includes people like Kevin McCord, the sheriff's department, fire and EMS and everything that it takes to make them run, down to ambulances, police cars, the nine-one-one call center, the public safety. I think we can all agree that those are vital and have to be funded, but they are very expensive and they help create a healthy and vibrant community. On a very positive note, past boards of commissioners have not saddled us with much debt. They have pay-as-you-go policies in place and so we try and raise enough money to pay for everything, if we can possibly, or debt load very little of it. So we only have a five percent of our tax bill going to debt service. We haven't settled future generations with a burden that they can't handle and I think this board will continue to do everything that we can to stop that from happening. In the next couple of weeks, Commissioner Jarvis, Commissioner Payment and Ike will be headed to Raleigh to work with our lobbying firm to try and get some money headed our way. We're considered a tier-three county and as a tier-three county, that cuts us out of a lot of grant money for things like schools. Other counties all around us seem to be getting money for schools except for this county. So we're working with our state legislators to try and get funding appropriated in the budget for a new school or some part of that new school. We have a sewer plant that we had to expand that just doubled or tripled in price over the last couple of years thanks to what's going on in our world. And so we have to work, deal with repairs and replacements. We also have an airport expansion among other projects that we would like to get done for economic development. So they're going to go over as our legislative delegation and shake hands and meet with people and see if we can get some money headed this way to help pay for all of these challenges that lay ahead of us. So if you do pray, take a minute to send your prayers with them that we can get that going to help us out. It will greatly affect our coming budgets and I thank you all for your patience this evening and listening to me.
Mr. Chairman, just one thing I want to add to that. For anybody who has lived here for any amount of time, probably realizes, but when I first bought my house, I grew up in the county here, when I first bought my house and the property, the property tax was over a dollar. A lot of people probably shocked, was like, what? It was ever, yeah, it was that high? It was over a dollar. I want to remember that. And now we're at forty-six. It's unbelievable how far we've dropped that, but it was high, high, high out of a first time. So this county's come a long ways from being over a dollar per hundred. It was ridiculous back in the day. So maybe I'm dating myself, but it was pretty high back then. So that's why I just want to add that.
Thank you. All right. Next up, and I probably stole some of Ike's thunder this evening. If I did, I apologize. He may have been ready to comment on that, but it's the county manager's report.
I have nothing to add, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, you got that knocked out of the park. How about the county attorney this evening? Anything from you?
I have nothing to add either.
All right, quick and easy. I like it. Administrative reports. Item one tonight is the YMCA annual report by the executive director, DJ Kofazy, from our Currituck County Y. Good evening, sir. Welcome.
Good evening. Pardon me while I just get set up real quick, but while I am, I just want to just give a shout out to the team up here about just creating a great place to live in Currituck County. We have Y staff that we recruit from all over the place and we're always telling them to move to Currituck County because it is just a great place to live all around. So we just continue to show that support and show the love to Currituck. To put it simply, I just want to share that the state of the Y in Currituck County is strong. We've had a great recovery from COVID. We are at our twenty nineteen membership numbers and we are just continuing to grow in that space. Our COVID low was eight hundred and fifty-nine membership units and today I'm happy to report we are at fourteen twenty-three, which is right where we need to be to be able to pay our bills. So we are, the community has rallied behind us. All the new people come to the area, love this Y, love this facility. So, and that is in turn just great to the investment that the county made in us so many years ago, twelve years this December. And when I tell people that, they're like, oh my God, twelve years? It has been twelve years this coming December. But at the local level, although we did recover very well, globally with the YMCA, Southampton Road still does struggle, we are still dealing with a multimillion dollar deficit and we do our best to keep expenses in check, not to overspend where we need to. We keep everything, we run a tight ship, but still fighting a multimillion dollar deficit out of COVID still is strong. But locally, your YMCA has done very well for itself outside of COVID. We have, with our membership recovery, this YMCA was ranked number one in multiple areas, cleanliness, knowledgeable staff, plenty of parking, plenty of equipment, and those are the top, you know, things that people look for when they are looking for a wellness facility. And that has shown, we had over ten thousand visits in the month of February, something we have not had since two thousand and nineteen. And to put it in perspective, we only had seven thousand in February twenty-two. So an extra hundred people a day walked through our doors in the month of February this year, which is great. We are seeing, we are busy and we feel it, but it's a great thing. People love this Y. We're always connecting with the members and they always walk in, the first thing they say, they love the mural right as they walk into the facility, they love the building, just the design overall, investment that the county has made. And with that comes our partnership recovery as well. We've renewed our partnership with, you know, our neighbors right on the campus, between Parks and Recreation, the Cooperative Extension, the Senior Center, Jason, Stacy, Cameron, they are all amazing people and amazing neighbors. I love working with them. But then also looking at our other partners in Currituck Kids, the Moyack Women's Club, the JCPC, Currituck County Schools, College of the Albemarle, we have renewed those partnerships, you know, especially in a time where we needed to, because we want to serve the community.
What's JCPC?
The Juvenile Crime Prevention Council. You know, we're working with Currituck Kids to provide services to the, you know, to the kids and events to the kids of the community, working with the Moyack Women's Club to end hunger here in the county, early intervention programs with the JCPC. Our aftercare programming is strong at the schools and Dr. Lutz and Renee are excellent partners in that space and we love having them on our board. And we also love having Bridge Church at the Y. You know, we have people come in and say they love to be able to, you know, get their spiritual needs met and be able to stay after and get their physical needs met as well. So that has turned out to be a great relationship that we have had. And I do want to shout out Randall real quick for the Citizens Academy, because I'm a part of the Citizens Academy and he does a great job. So kudos to Randall if he's watching from somewhere. Our community impact is also strong. Last year, our YMCA alone, just in Currituck County, gave away over two hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars in financial assistance. We do raise money and a lot of you know that we do go out and we seek donations and sponsorships from community organizations, businesses, individuals, just to be able to support our community. One in three people that walk through our doors need some level of financial assistance and we want to make sure that we give that to them. That equated to over a hundred and, over a hundred free swim lessons. We gave seventy-six teenagers free memberships last summer and we will bring that program back again this summer and give more free memberships to the teens as well. Does anybody have any questions for me before I move forward?
I bet I have a comment.
Anything I can cover.
I just want to, first of all, thank you so much for modeling how someone can come to an area and really make an impact in the community. Your involvement in the community is exceptional and I just can't thank you enough from volunteering with the opioid settlement task force. I appreciate that. With what you do with the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, of which I'm a member, I see your impact and I just want to thank you for that. And you didn't tout this, but the food pantry, the mobile food pantry that you're doing at the Y is just an incredible resource that our community is grateful for and I'm just so thankful for your involvement and all that you've done to make this community better.
Thank you, Commissioner Jarvis.
I think it should be said, it's interesting you said that, that not, not all growth is bad, not all the people that move here are bad. Many contribute and, you can't even figure it all out. Butch Petry moved here after he retired and started Backpack for Kids and I believe he got the food pantry going in Grandy too, didn't he?
Yeah, he was one of the players in that.
There is good in people that move here. They, they may want to change the place sometimes, but sometimes they want to dig in and really become part of the community as well.
One thing I'd like to say, I think what this report shows is that we made the right decision in the investment in putting the YMCA up. I was part of that board and I'm proud of what y'all are doing and keep it up.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And we, we have a lot to look forward to with the rest of two thousand and twenty-three. Our pool activities, we're going to engage the visitors that come to the area, we'll have food trucks at the Y, do a lot of extra activities focused around the Alpine Tower, which I know always gets questioned how we use it. We will open it up for community events and public use and member use as well this summer. But also continuing in the spaces of mental health and financial literacy and ending hunger in the county and all that and everything else we do. We're going to keep having fun in summer camp and childcare programs and swim lessons. It's funny that you mentioned the food pantry. We were running some numbers earlier. We've served over, served about a hundred and fifty-three residents, they're all Currituck County residents and have distributed over eight thousand pounds of food today and we've only done two.
Commissioner Mike, sorry. Mr. Jay, I just wanted to, a lot, a lot of people may not be aware of this, but the Y and its parks and rec have a good working relationship where they don't compete against each other. The sports that the county offers, the Y does not offer those, but if there's any sporting activities that the county doesn't offer, I believe the Y gets involved with as many of those as they can, like the real youth soccer league, the county only goes so low and I think the YMCA has a real, real small league for the soccer kids, was it like the three and four years olds or something or two or?
I guess, so we just launched our preschool soccer this past Saturday and three and four-year-olds and I'm blessed to be able to coach that. And y'all want to see how cats are wrangled, please stop by the Y on Saturday mornings and I'll show you.
But that is a good relationship between the Y and the rec working together to provide, you know, those type of activities for all ages out there and I appreciate that as well. I just wanted to, this community out there to know that.
I'd like to say one thing too, they do do a great job on all the stuff. The twenty-four hour access, like the additional ten dollars, whatever, my twenty-year-old who's in, almost finished diesel mechanic school, the kid literally goes to the Y three hundred and sixty days a year. He loves it and I get our money's worth on that. And like I said, that is just a great part of the YMCA, you know, because like I said, not all of those have that. And I know we didn't have it until what, six months ago maybe or a year?
Twenty-four hours, it'll just be a year, little over a year in May.
Yeah, it's a great program. Your staff's awesome, you guys do a good job, keep up the good work. We appreciate it.
And I'm up here just as a conduit, I would not be able to do what I do without the dedicated volunteers on our board. Sandy Davidson, she's our board chair this year, Paul being our immediate past chair. We have a great group of officers and board members and we're always looking for like-minded individuals to serve on that board as well.
And prior to our meeting starting, I believe somebody got a award for the volunteer of the year, I believe he's in the audience back there.
Mr. Paul O'Neill, winner of volunteer of the year for two thousand and twenty-two. He's shy right now.
Yes, he is. Yeah, he hates being out front.
Yeah, he sure does, sure does. Can I answer any other questions for the commissioners?
Okay, that'll do it. Thank you very much. We appreciate you coming out this evening. All right, next up, we're going to deviate from our normal procedure. All right, next up, we're going to deviate from our normal procedures, and I'll ask the indulgence of the audience. We're going to step over in just a minute to do a closed session, so you guys will have to hang loose here for a few minutes while we get discussions with our county attorney over. And with that, I'm going to move, make a motion to move us into closed session pursuant to GS 143-318.1183, to consult with the county attorney and preserve attorney-client privilege. I need a second. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
We were going.
All right, thank you. We'll stand at ease in this room and move over to the conference room where we can have some quiet discussions. Solar energy facility with related transmission interconnection infrastructure in Shawboro. That's a lot to say. The facility acreage requested is approximately 1,075 acres and includes the following properties located in the Moayok Township, Tax Map 33, parcel 27, Tax Map 34, parcels 24L and 25C, Tax Map 42, parcels 25, 18A, 24A, 24B, Tax Map 43, parcels 21 and 10B.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I asked for a motion to recuse me from this.
Thank you, you can have a motion till.
A motion may be recused.
I'll second it.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Owen. Do you want to stick around and watch?
It's in the Crawford Township, not Moayok.
Did I say that? Or did it say that?
It said that.
Thank you. Oh, it does. I think we say Moayok so much in here, just as inherent to go into the.
It's like Marsha, Marsha, Marsha.
Right. All right. We've got that over with. Anyone that intends to offer testimony needs to come forward and be sworn in this evening. We have some bibles up front. We'll need your left hand on a bible and your right hand in the air, or you can affirm if you'd like to. If we don't have enough, or if it's not your. If you've signed up for public comment, you go on that as well. So anyone that signed up for public comment would have to.
Oh, here comes some more.
Yep. All right, well, if we don't.
Two sessions?
Could do two rounds.
Well, we can just have people affirm as well if there's not enough bibles around. Do you all solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give be the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God? Thank you all. All right, everybody get settled, and have Mr. Kemp come up this evening for the county. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Thank you, Chairman, Vice Chair, and members of the board. All right, as you heard, this is a special use permit request to construct an approximately 1,000-acre solar energy facility in Shawboro. Specifically, this is located, as you can see from this map, just south of the existing solar in Shawboro. It extends from the south about two and a half miles down. The site is zoned agriculture, as is the surrounding area. There are small bits of general business in the area, but those are just right along Shawboro Road. You can kind of see through the zoning layer that the land, surrounding land is agriculture and forested with a few single-family homes. There are 10 parcels included in the area of this request. The parcels are contiguous and are divided about halfway, right here by East Ridge Road. I did want to point out that there is one parcel, it's nine and a half acres, right where I'm circling there, more or less in the middle of the request, that is not part of this request.
Can you talk about that for just a second, because it's kind of a weird little landlocked piece in there? Why is that out, do you know?
As I understand it, the owner of the parcel just did not sell or lease or have any agreement with the solar company, refused that agreement, so it is not part.
So, that piece is landlocked, is it not? Is there?
It is surrounded on all sides by parcels included with this request. Access probably via an easement would need to be provided.
Okay. All right, we'll address that with an applicant when they come up.
All right.
Thank you.
The request itself is for 150-megawatt facility. It is, it includes photovoltaic panels, access road, fencing, a racking system, inverters, transformers, collection system, and interconnection system, including substations and related facilities and equipment. The total site area, as I mentioned, is 1,075 acres with a construction area of 878 acres. It will be developed in phases where the first phase is approximately 475 acres. Thirty percent of the site area will remain agricultural in use. Here's the site plan of the proposed facility. The project will be ground-mounted solar voltaic facility using a fixed tracking system. You can see the proposed location of the solar panels. It's kind of this gray color here. The panels will be mounted on a racking system and secured by piles. A geotechnical evaluation will determine the depth of the piles, and it will meet North Carolina code and be certified by a North Carolina engineer. The site will be surrounded by a six-foot fence. There are wetlands that have been identified on the property. It's kind of difficult to see, but it's this blue spotted area here, here, and then some down here. There is no development planned in those wetland areas. Just to give you a quick summary of the infrastructure review for the property, there is no potable water. However, there will be water trucks on the site to help mitigate any concerns with dust. There are three monitoring wells to monitor groundwater as per the requirements of the UDO. There is no permanent sewer facilities, however, portable toilets will be provided during construction. In stormwater and drainage, national pollutant discharge elimination system permit and county stormwater permit will need to be approved. Erosion and sediment control measures will be installed to protect surface water, groundwater, and stormwater quality. Setbacks from all major drainage and onsite ditches will be maintained. There is security and maintenance lighting anticipated at the substation and inverter locations. These will be full cutoff fixtures. If not, a security plan would need to be approved by the planning department. For landscaping, a type-D buffer will be installed along the entire perimeter of the site. And lastly, this use is permitted in the AG zoning district. NCDOT will control access to the facility from East Ridge Road and Meads Road. They do this through the issuance of driveway permits. NCDOT will also monitor and control road conditions and maintenance during construction. They will work with the developer to fix any issues that should arise. The Imagine Currituck Plan designates a majority of this site in the G1 low-density growth area. There is a small portion right here on the west side that is designated G2 controlled growth, but there is no development proposed in that area of the site. This plan supports keeping Shawboro predominantly rural and protecting agriculture and open space. The solar facility will not increase density and will preserve areas of open space. There are two applicable goals in the Imagine Currituck. The first is infrastructure goal and policy 8.2. This is to ensure county staff's capacity can meet demands of growing population. This development will not grow the population and should not increase the demands on county's infrastructure or services. The second policy is environmental goal and policy 1, which is to preserve and protect the county's environmentally significant and sensitive lands and surrounding areas. As I mentioned, the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers has delineated wetlands on the property, and development in this area will be avoided as well as the proper setbacks maintained. The site is also located in the Shawboro-Crawford-Slygo subarea. There are two policies involved. These policies speak to the balancing of residential growth and preserving agriculture in open space, as this is not a center for development. The technical review committee reviewed this application and found that it will meet the policies of Imagine Currituck and the standards of the UDO. And with that, I will leave you with the four review standards for special use permits and stand by for any questions.
Kevin?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so if you would go back to the Imagine Currituck specifically relative to the statement in open space? And do you have handy the definition of open space for me, please?
Yes, I do. The definition of open space per Section 10.5 of the UDO is space suitable for passive recreation, gardens, or landscaping, which may include areas left in their natural state, trails, ponds, stream banks, recreation areas, areas of excessive slopes, low-lying areas, marsh land, environmentally sensitive areas, required landscaping areas, and some governmental facilities. Such space must be free of automobile traffic, but parking is allowed and be readily accessible to all those for whom it is required.
Okay, so with that in mind, can you make the connection for me, how that, which clearly to me is not structures, that's open spaces, we know open space to be, right? That's agriculture, that's farming, that's woods, all of that kind of stuff. So, how are we, staff, making the connection between that open space and 1,000 acres of solar panels and whatever, or whatever it's reduced to?
Right. What staff is making the connection with is we're looking at the area, you know, the 30% that will be agriculture and the wetlands that remains undeveloped. And we are, you know, promoting that as the entire 1,075 acres aren't being developed, but it is leaving some open space. That's how we're making the connection.
Okay.
And that is normal in any development, right? The developer has to set aside open space, a percentage of open space against whatever space they're using for whatever the project may be.
Yes, sir. It depends on the type of development.
Right.
I think the difference here, Mr. Chairman, is that the strategic meeting that we had where we came out with Currituck, Imagine Currituck, Currituck 2040, was this area of the county we were going to preserve. I mean, and it's right here, right? And clearly, the majority of the acreage is not going to be for that purpose. The majority is clearly in the other direction. That's all I had, Kevin.
Thank you. Any other questions from the staff, for the staff from the board? All right, thank you, Kevin, appreciate it. Maybe have more questions for you in the future.
Thank you, Chairman.
At this time, I'll invite the applicant or the representative up this evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. My name is Beth Trejo's. I'm an attorney with Nelson Mullins, and I'm here tonight on behalf of the applicant in support of the proposed special use permit. Thank you to your staff for their thorough presentation and their staff report. We would ask that you include their staff report and the PowerPoint materials, as well as the application and other materials you received in your packet into the record of this hearing. We understand this is a quasi-judicial hearing, and you will be reviewing the information we provide for compliance with your required findings of fact, and that we are required to submit to you substantial competent and material evidence of all of the items, the four findings of fact required by your ordinance. And, you know, in our effort to do that, we have brought a number of experts with us tonight. We have Cody Janice, who is the Director of Field Operations for Sun Energy One. We have Derek Ivy, who is the Director of Environmental Compliance for Sun Energy One. We have Eric Bronson, who's the Director of Livestock for Sun Energy One. We also have Jacob Dooley, who's a civil engineer with Timmins Engineering, Nick Kirkland, who's a North Carolina Certified Real Estate Appraiser, and Chris Sandifer, who's an electrical engineer who formerly worked with Duke Power. We know you are familiar with solar farms, so we're going to endeavor to be efficient with your time while still meeting the required findings of fact. So what we would like to do is call forward each of our experts to speak with you, and of course, would welcome any questions you might have as we move through that process.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Well, with that, I'd like to start with Cody Janice. Cody, if you'd introduce yourself to the board.
Good evening. My name is Cody Janice, and I am the Director of Operations for Sun Energy One, Field Operations. I've worked with Sun Energy One for nearly eight years now, and in that capacity, I've been exposed to the development and operations of solar farms in North Carolina, Virginia, Ohio, and Maryland. I'm here today in regards to the Shawboro East Ridge solar project. We have worked closely with your staff to ensure all elements of your solar energy facility ordinance have been met. Sun Energy One has an existing solar farm in Currituck County, and we've been a part of your community for nearly eight years now. This farm will be very similar to the existing one, and we will continue to be a positive neighbor in the community. Here, we are proposing 150-megawatt solar farm project that has a project area of nearly 1,075 acres, of which the solar panels themselves will occupy only about 475 of those acres. We plan to utilize a ground-mounted photovoltaic panels that are on a fixed tracking system. Solar panels will be mounted on racks that are secured by piles driven into the ground. So you have your piles, and then you'll have your racks, and then your panels will bolt onto your racks. If you can imagine a tilted panel, the highest point is approximately eight feet four inches. Obviously, that is above grade. That is much less than the 20 feet permitted in your ordinance. We plan to raise and care for sheep on at least 30% of the solar farm to meet the agricultural activity requirement under your ordinance. Having sheep on site will help us keep the vegetation of the property trimmed. Construction will be limited to the 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Monday through Saturday as required by the ordinance. Water trucks will also be used on the site during the construction process to address any dust during the construction process. We have prepared a solar energy facility impact analysis and a decommissioning plan that are both in compliance with your ordinance. Solar farms have a number of advantages for the local community. A solar farm is a temporary use that effectively retains large tracts of land for development in the future while still allowing local landowners to financially benefit from their property. Solar farms will generate tax dollars in Currituck County with little demand on public facilities or county services. That means no need for additional water sewer services, no need for additional seats in overcrowded schools, no need for additional police or EMF services, and no infrastructure to be maintained by the county. Solar farms do bring much economic development to the county via hundreds of temporary jobs, numerous full-time jobs, increased business margins for local businesses like gas stations, food places, hotels, hardware service, and more. And not to mention the on-the-job training for many local individuals. As discussed earlier in the Commissioner's report, the need for additional tax dollars. Our existing solar farm paid approximately $77,000 last year in county taxes. We project that this farm will pay approximately $190,000 to Currituck County each year. The useful life of the solar farm is likely 40 to 50 years, and over that time, the county could collect nearly $10 million to use for providing beneficial services to the community. We ask for your support of the proposed solar farm, as we believe we have met all requirements in your solar energy facility ordinance, as other recently approved farms have. Thank you for your time tonight.
Questions for, for Cody?
Sorry, Deb. So, and I can't remember who, but said it's going to be very similar to the facility that's down in Moayok. Can you tell me, are the transformer-type? I think they're transformers. I don't know, are they transformer inverters?
Well, yeah, so you have your transformers, yes, correct.
Okay. Are they the same, or are they a different model than what you're using in Moayok?
They were probably different models because we're a couple of years in new technology.
Okay, I'm sorry. Do they function the same as the ones that are in Moayok? How about that?
More than likely, yes, sir.
And we do have an electrical engineer coming forward who may be the better person to answer your question.
All right. And then, so you mentioned maintaining the grass?
Yes, sir.
Or the grounds, right? That's been an issue in this county with every facility that's ever gone in. So, I saw in your maintenance plan that that's going to be done, I think you're saying twice, that the grass will be cut twice a year.
I'll have to re-review that, but it'll definitely be maintained to keep in.
Would you like, would you like a moment to review that?
And. You know, one of the things that's being proposed as a part of this farm is our sheep to meet your agricultural requirement, and they will eat the grass most days. So, you know--
He will be able to come up and speak in regards to--
I'm sorry, say that again. I'm not asking you about sheep.
He will be coming up--
I've owned sheep.
To go in more detail.
I'm not relying on sheep.
Okay.
So my question is, in your maintenance plan that you all submitted, if you need to review it, go ahead. You're the expert here, not me.
Cody, will you meet the ordinance requirements?
The solar facility will meet the ordinance requirements as set forth.
Okay. Have, do you have experience in meeting that requirements?
Yes. I don't personally, but our sites, we do have annual inspections.
Okay. Do you have anyone here that actually works at your site currently, here tonight, the current site that you have in town?
We do, yeah. That are on the--
I'll save that for them.
Thank you.
That's fine. So your role is this facility, correct? Just this facility?
Our facilities here in North Carolina, correct. And help--
And what we're here to discuss with you tonight is this facility and this application.
Got it. So I'm trying to find out who's going to know about the operations at this site. And if it's someone else, I'll be happy to wait.
And, you know, so what we have submitted to you is a packet of materials that outlines our plan for operations--
Got it.
--and included is, you know, that we will meet your requirements. And if your question is, if, you know, the grass must be cut more frequently than planned to meet your ordinance requirements, you know, that will be done. Is that not correct, Cody?
That is correct. Yes. To keep in compliance with the ordinance.
Okay. And do we have experience doing that?
As far as like the landscaping crews, is that what you're referring?
What I'm saying is, have you successfully been able to keep the grass within the counties, you know, from the time it's built to the time it goes into operation? Do you have experience in keeping the grass within the county's ordinance?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Do you know why that's important? It's going to be your baby.
To stay in compliance with, obviously, stay in compliance with the county, no doubt.
Okay. I'll ask. The reason is safety.
Correct.
Right? The reason is safety, because long grass, right, presents a hazard to us, the residents in the area, okay? I'm trying to find out if you all have experience keeping grass within the county's ordinance, and if so, where are we doing that?
Let me call up somebody that's got a little more experience in regards to that.
Whoever comes up and knows the answer to that question, I'd be happy to hear that.
We'll call everybody--
And is there a construction manager, or that'll be somebody different, correct? Not Cody?
So, you know, the requirements that you, you know, we have brought folks to show compliance with the findings of fact that are required to approve the ordinance.
Because--
And so, yeah, and so that's what we'll be doing.
Okay. Because he made several statements that along the lines of keep the, you know, bringing in water trucks to keep the dust down. Is he the guy that's going to answer those questions, or is there going to be somebody else?
Yeah. So Cody is the Director of Field Operations, but does he--
But that's not construction.
Maintain the site, no.
You're going to have a site supervisor there.
To ensure our site supervisors are keeping in compliance.
I think you delved a little deep at this point in time.
Okay, got it. Sorry.
So let's get through this, and I bet there's going to be some more appropriate people to answer.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
So, next we'll call Derek Ivy, who is the Director of Environmental Compliance. And, you know, we are, we're talking about our plans for this site.
Good evening. Thank you. My name is Derek Ivy. I'm the Director of Environmental Compliance for Sun Energy One. I have an undergraduate degree in Wildlife Ecology and Management from Texas A&amp;M University. I'm a Certified Wildlife Biologist with the Wildlife Society. I'm an Arborist certified by the International Society of Arboriculture. And I previously worked for the US Army Corps of Engineers as a civil employee in the role of Natural Resource Specialist. I have visited the Shawboro East Ridge Solar Farm. I've walked most of the property. I'm familiar with, and I've been involved in the environmental planning aspects and landscape aspects of the plans for development of the property as a solar energy facility. I was involved in the preparation of the solar energy facility impact analysis associated with this project, and our proposal meets all the requirements of the solar facility ordinance. Landscape buffers will be provided that will meet the Type D buffer standard in the ordinance, utilizing both new and existing plant materials where appropriate to meet the opaque buffered standard. This standard requires 100% opacity. It's assessed from the exterior property lines and the rights of way, and includes a performance guarantee to be provided until that 100% opacity is reached. Per coordination with the Division of Coastal Management, the project is not located within a KAMA area of environmental concern. Additionally, reviewed by the North Carolina Natural Heritage Program, documented no records for rare species, important natural communities, natural areas and/or conservation or managed areas within the proposed project boundary. All potentially jurisdictional streams, as mentioned before, ditches and wetlands have been delineated. We met with the Army Corps of Engineers on site in early 2022 to confirm environmentally sensitive areas, and have designed the site to avoid and minimize impact to these areas, including a 100-foot setback buffer for wetlands as required by the ordinance. Our engineers, Kim Hamby and Jacob Dooley with Timmins Engineering, will complete our stormwater and erosion control plans during detailed design process. Any drainage ditches utilized in the design adjoining or traversing the project will be maintained in accordance with your ordinance requirements. This site will require only minor grading, so soil disturbance is expected to be kept to a minimum, and erosion sediment control best management practices will be implemented throughout construction. Additionally, soil stabilization will be performed as required by the NPDS permits and local requirements. Additionally, we propose three groundwater monitoring wells at a minimum depth of 20 feet and at locations meeting your ordinance requirements, and we will comply with the testing requirements set out in the ordinance. We appreciate your time in considering this proposal and ask for your approval of the proposed solar farm. Thank you.
Let me go first. The groundwater and wells, you said there's going to be three of them?
The proposed three, yes, sir.
Okay. And the-- I want to tag on that. Go ahead. And my question for you is, you know, in a typical, and I'll use the Summit Farms for example, that there are three wells, but that's basically one massive feature, right? It's all, I guess my question is, with East Ridge Road bisecting this, I'm thinking that as a condition for approval, there should be an additional three wells on the opposite side of East Ridge Road. We're not going to capture groundwater on the other side of the road because it's separated by massive ditch.
Currently, the standard requires one in the center of the facility and one at either the north and south end, or the east and west end, and that's what's been proposed.
Was there, I looked at those this morning, and it escapes me, where exactly are they located on the property?
That's what I was going to ask.
I gotta try and find that map on this little computer. Oh, look at that.
This is the large copy of the map that's in your packet.
Come on, come on up, come on up in here just a little further. Go ahead.
For the agent.
For the agent and infirm. We'll pass around.
They're labeled on this.
Okay.
One at the north end of the project--
And one over there. So there is one on each side of the road.
Okay.
All right.
I would argue that's not very much in the center.
What was that idea? There you go. Okay. There it is. That's the facility.
That's--
Okay. Kevin, it's all in the map. Kevin, did you see it?
So it's up, so it's only two?
Three.
Three. There's one in the middle, one north and one south.
The UDO.
No, I believe it was, it depends on the size. Thought it was something to do with the size of the facility. It's been a couple of years since we--
It's been a minute. Well, ask Kevin.
I'll bet Ms. Glaive will know, or Kevin, what the UDO requirement is. It's four? Three? It is three, right? Okay.
Yes, three monitoring wells.
Thank you.
So I would suggest, because of East Ridge Road, that there'd be three north and three south of East Ridge as a condition. Just, that's, you don't need to argue or debate, that's just for us.
Well, I think the question is, if we wanted to set that as a condition, would you guys be willing to put in a couple more wells? That is the question before you.
If that's something that you think is necessary, and if you feel the requirements in your ordinance are insufficient, you would be willing to do that.
Right. And it's an odd duck, as you said, it traverses a road. We have drainage ditches on either side of the road, so water flows. It's not the same on both sides of the, it's two different properties essentially because of the bissection of the road, so. All right, well, we will maybe get to that point, see how it goes. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm on it tonight.
I'll ask Jacob Dooley to come forward and introduce himself to the board.
Good evening. My name is Jacob Dooley, and I'm a civil engineer for Timmins Group. I have a degree in civil engineering from NC State University, and I am a licensed North Carolina professional engineer. I am familiar with the county ordinance and requirements, and I have participated in the planning and site design for the solar farm proposed on this property. I have visited this property, and I'm aware that the site drains poorly as there are wetland areas adjacent to the project with little topographic relief, with the majority of the drainage directed southeast of our site towards North River. The site design meets all requirements in the county ordinance and meets all setbacks and buffers required. We plan on utilizing existing and newly planted vegetation to ensure the Type D opaque buffer meets the stringent opacity requirements in your ordinance. I am familiar with the county's stormwater requirements and modeling. The stormwater runoff for this project will be our next scope of work. We plan on utilizing ditches and stormwater attenuation areas on site to achieve the required pre- and post-stormwater runoff values from the county. Thanks for your time, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
As a point of order, you're tenured as an expert witness, as a professional engineer familiar with the county's ordinance, familiar with the site, and I'm, and we've got a print with two wells instead of the county's ordinance of three, as a point of, okay?
There's--
There's two. There's one in the north, one in the middle--
I thought they said two.
No, three.
I retract that statement. I'm sorry.
So who would be best to answer fencing around this facility? Trying to find it on the maps, and you've got red lines, yellow lines, orange lines, blue lines. Which of your, would it be Mr., maybe Mr. Cody or someone else? The reason I ask is relative to the question I asked the Kevin or Kemp, our director, in that weird little upside-down Nike check piece of property. I'm wondering, is the fencing going to encompass the entire property or just the areas that are active, that have the panels? So my question is this, because you have, you've got a red line delineated, and then you have that one parcel, that nine-point-something acres that is sitting there by itself that's essentially landlocked, and, but that area surrounding it is part of your total coverage for this facility, do you know if that owner has access to this property through an easement? Because it's ultimately going to be under your control, is it not?
That's right. Typically, I think right now they're accessing it through a neighbor, in which we would work with that property, to make sure they have access to the property.
Okay. Okay. And do you know if they're coming through what area? It's not going to impact your solar area, your solar field.
Right now, we believe they're entering it through the, what? East side of the property?
Okay.
Off a mead road.
Okay. Off a mead road, they're coming down the back. Okay. All right. Very good. Just want to ensure that they don't get landlocked in there and can't access their property, especially with restrictions around solar-producing facilities, so.
We will not impede their access.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you.
Nick Kirkland. My name is Nick Kirkland with Kirkland Appraisals. I'm a state-certified general appraiser in the state of North Carolina, as well as the Commonwealth of Virginia. I've been accepted as an expert in property value impacts before boards just like this, before well over 100 hearings at this point, discussing solar farms and other similar property value impact questions. I'm going to discuss three different things today. First being harmony of use, second being whether or not this is in conformity with the long-range plans for the area, and finally, whether or not this will impact the adjoining property values. So first off, over the last decade, Kirkland Appraisals has looked at over 950 solar farms. The vast majority of those have been located on the east coast and located in North Carolina. But what we found is that most solar farms are located in primarily rural to suburban transition areas, with most of the adjoining uses for solar farms being residential and agricultural. It is not atypical to find solar farms that back right up to subdivisions, and in some cases, multiple subdivisions. For the proposed site, this is a very typical location wherein you would find a solar farm, with most of the adjoining uses being residential and agricultural. And it's my professional opinion that the proposed use will be a harmonious use in its location. Furthermore, the Imagine Currituck 2040 Vision Plan explicitly calls for low-density residential development, maintaining agricultural areas, and maintaining open space. Given that this is a large amount of area, obviously, that's a concern for the board. However, looking at solar farms in a long-term use, solar farms are not a permanent fixture. They are a temporary use, often seen as a way to bank land, so that way, when the solar farm is done and the piles are pulled up and the racking is removed, this will sit as agricultural land as it is today. It is an interim use, not considered a long-term use. Furthermore, it will not have any drain on county infrastructure or any needs beyond that. So in my professional opinion, this will be in conformity with the land use plan. And finally, in order to determine whether or not this would have an impact on the adjoining property values, we've done what's called a matched pair or a paired sales analysis. So this is where we compare homes that have sold next to existing solar farms with similar nearby homes that have sold that are not next to solar farms, in order to measure for any difference. We have over 90 examples, which show a range of impact from negative 10% for being next to a solar farm to positive 10% for being next to the solar farm, with the vast majority of the data falling between 0 and positive 5%. When looking at the average and median of all these data points, they come to positive 2% and, for the average, as well as the median, which is a strong indication of no impact to the adjoining property value. This is further supported by several university studies that have been done, which show that in rural areas, solar farms do not impact the adjoining property values. And I'm happy to go into further detail or answer any more questions that you may have. I do note that there is the piece of land that you had asked about that is currently landlocked and is looking to be accessed via an easement, and we have looked at that, and there is no impact to that property either. The reason being, when looking at how property is valued, you're looking at what a market participant would do with a property, what is its utility, what is its usefulness? Currently, a tract like that, that is primarily wetlands, would be utilized for passive recreation or open spaces defined previously in this hearing. And in the after, provided it has access via an easement, there would be no impact to that property value, because it would have the same utility. It would still be able to be utilized for passive recreation and open space for that property owner. Therefore, it's my professional opinion that this will not have an impact on the adjoining property values, including that inset parcel. I'm happy to answer any question that you may have or go through the report.
So you said that on average, so when you look at all of this, you only had a 2% increase in values on average, right?
It shows that being next to a solar farm, on average, and the median, does indicate positive 2% for adjoining homes. However, the real estate market is an imperfect market. We would define anything between negative 5% to positive 5% as no impact, actually. Just given that, if you take, for example, a cookie cutter neighborhood with similar homes throughout, yes, they will sell for very similar amounts, oftentimes within plus or minus 5%, but there's no guarantee that they'll all sell for the exact same price. It's not like you can go to the corner store and all the cokes are the same price. Real estate is not perfect, and therefore, a positive 2% is a strong indication of no impact rather than a mild positive.
Okay. What was the time, like the calendar months that you used as part of this analysis?
So we've been looking at this data over the past 14 years at this point, and--
Okay. But I'm, and I didn't get a chance to read this because it's well done. How much of this is specific to Currituck?
We have looked at all of the solar farms within Currituck and pulled data trying to find match pairs. To my knowledge, we do not have any match pairs explicitly from Currituck County. The reason for that is not because we wouldn't want to present that data. We absolutely would. It's the same problem when you talk about any given large farm, how many times has the adjoining property sold in the last several years? And then you talk about how infrequent solar farms are sighted. It is difficult. We are actively checking, and it is something that we're looking for, because jurisdictions absolutely want to know what's happening locally. We just don't have any data from Currituck explicitly.
So your 2% average, where did that occur?
So that 2% comes from when looking at, we have 94 examples of those match pairs, 94 times where a home is sold next to a solar farm, and then compared that to three to five nearby homes that were not next to a solar farm. When looking--
Geographically, where?
Oh, that is from across-- Oh, that is from across the country. The... When looking at the southeast alone, that's a positive 1% for average and median, with the same range of negative 10 to positive 10%.
Okay.
Chairman of the... Commissioner Bowman, there's a bunch of... If you go deeper in the thing, there's some local ones.
I got it.
65.
What's that?
Page 65 is what he's referencing.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I was looking at it too.
So, so Currituck County, are you aware of what our growth has been in the last probably five years?
I... We do have census data in here. I do not know it off the top of my head. I'm happy to turn to that.
Our property values have... How much they've increased?
We have not explicitly been monitoring Currituck County property value increases over the prior three years. However, this is something that we look at on a national scale and we have a range of property values that have sold from homes of approximately 80,000 to 100,000 to homes of upwards of $1.6 million within 120 feet of solar farms that are selling for the similar price as those that are... That do not back up to solar farms.
The point I'm trying to make is that the houses that are selling in Currituck County right now, or at least in the last probably three or four years, if you were at 2%, you got clocked, you got cleaned. So we're a very... And we're the fastest growing county in the state of North Carolina. We're number 13, 47, 40... Nationally. I mean, we're one of the hottest. Anyway, okay, thank you.
That was sort of 19. It doesn't... So you do have homes in here in the packet that you have cited that have sold near facilities, the Wildwood Solar Project, for instance, in Moyac. Are you familiar with these? Did you put these in here?
I am familiar with these. I just had not flipped through explicitly this evening. But yes, will you tell me what... Yeah, page 37?
60... Well, for us, it's page 65 in our packet. I don't know. That probably doesn't help you much. Oh, 37 in your book?
No, no. He's referencing specific properties like...
There's about... There's about 12.
The property near the Wildwood Solar Project that in April 2007 was 170,000 and sold in 2019 for 478,000 and is estimated to be valued at 666,000. That's what he's referencing.
Yeah.
You mean the Zillow?
The Zillow. Well, that... And I don't really count Zillow as a good estimate.
Well, that's what's in here. I'm not arguing with it. I'm just saying that's what's in here.
Are you aware of that?
It's in the packet that you guys presented to us for...
Can you tell me the page number again? I want to make sure I'm on the same page.
On page 65 of the packet, our agenda packet.
Your agenda packet.
Yes, I don't know that you would have that specifically, but...
His packet has some at the back in the 60s. There's a bunch of homes that have sold in ranchland.
This is this.
In grandy.
That they provided.
Okay.
I don't even remember seeing that page in my agenda that I looked at.
We do look at Summit and the ranchland solar in Moyoc, so we do actually have some data in here from Currituck County. And these show actually a very similar range to the overall data. It shows a range of negative 10% to positive 11%, with the average being positive 2% and the median being positive 3% when looking at that.
And having now seen the materials you're referring to, I would just point out that was something that was submitted by Sun Energy on a support of their application packet. It is not a port of Mr. Kirkland's analysis, so.
There's a disparity. Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
But that piece of property is on your sheet on page 64. It would be the third, fourth from the top, 33 Summit. So it is in your packet. It is analyzed by him.
Yes, so...
So I was just saying the materials that you were... That Lisa you referenced in the packet
Right.
were not submitted by him. He may have the same hose listed, but that material is not...
I see what you're saying. It's on page 64. That... So page 64 shows the breakdown of all of those match pairs that I've been discussing. So that shows the comparison of homes to homes. That is the summary essentially of what we've done on all the prior pages. So that's pulling the earlier data in the report and concatenating that down to determine overall where is that total range? Where is the overall average and median of impacts?
Dude, I can't make the sound.
All right, that's...
I mean, I can read it. What's the adjusted sale price? What does that mean?
So that's adjusting for either construction, year built, time of sale, so market conditions, things like that. The typical things that you'd have adjusted for.
That's what I thought. I just wanted to confirm.
Would you guys like to take a minute and go through some of this or not?
I'm good.
I'm good. I'm good.
I looked up about five of them on my phone while... From the addresses, just... I'm good.
Okay, thank you. Anything further for Mr. Nick? All right, thank you much for your time. Appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, we would ask that Mr. Kirkland's report be included as a part of the record.
Thank you. Will do.
And we would call Mr. Chris Sandifer.
Sorry, who was this again?
Chris Sandifer. He'll introduce himself to the board.
Good evening, Board. My name is Chris Sandifer. I'm the 3118 Green Roads Spring Hope, North Carolina. That's Nash County. Thank you for having us. Thank you for your consideration. I am a licensed professional engineer in the state of North Carolina and most of the states between Texas and New York. I'm also a licensed electrical contractor in limited classification in the state of North Carolina. I did work for Duke for 30 years and the last five years was the... I was in the process of interconnecting utility scale solar protect generation. I serve on the Nash County Planning Board where we met tonight. I missed them, but we were considering our 39th. It was 80 megawatts tonight. I assume it will be approved with the other 38 that went before it. And we appreciate the benefits of having tax revenue. And as a resident of Nash County, I appreciate having tax revenue that does not require a facility. So it keeps our tax rates down and we're thankful for it. Also, I'm a farmer and I have 100 acres of panels on my farm. And so I've... As a contractor, I've installed them, I've removed them, I've maintained them. There's not a whole lot about a panel. If you've got a question you want to ask me, I'd be more than happy to try and answer it for you. I hold multiple licenses at FCC, pesticide application for farms. I'm a certified beekeeper, so I do that when I'm designing, you know, for pollination. I do all that. So I would just say without hesitation or any kind of equivocation that this facility is designed will not materially endanger the health and safety of the residents of the county. And as a trained planning board member, I would say it's precisely where it needs to be to not have... To be harmonious. It makes no noise. There's no dust, not even that you would find in typical farming applications when you're disc in there or something like that. There's... After construction, I'm talking about. It's... There's no pollution. There's nothing in there in the panels that can leach out and cause any kind of damage. It's... The North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality has ruled at least as being not adding to the impervious nature of soil. So any water that would come would have a tendency to go into the ground and recharge the aquifer. So for that reason, I would say it's in a harmonious use of the land. And I would entertain any questions you might have.
Are you from... Earlier was stated that new technology, the newer panels, I guess, or newer... Are you familiar with what's being proposed?
I've talked to the applicant and I've talked, yes. And so the type of panel they're talking about using is a silicon panel, crystalline silicon, maybe mono, maybe poly. I don't know. That hasn't been determined yet. But these panels are made up of the three most common elements found on the earth's crust, and that's aluminum, silicon, and oxygen. And that's what these panels are made out of. They are tested. The tier one panels are tested so that if they're... If they were to be put into a landfill, you could put them straight into a landfill. There's no hazardous chemicals in them that would preclude it from being put in a class two landfill. That's not what will happen. They're too valuable to ever be put in a landfill. No more. Somebody would put a car in a landfill. You could, but if you took the gas tank off, but...
So what do they do when panels are damaged? What do they do when panels are damaged?
Right now, the panels that are being damaged can be taken to First Solar in Ohio. They recycle the panels.
Okay, so they will be taken off-site? They will be taken off-site?
I would assume they would not leave a viable panel. I don't know that, but I would assume that if someone that had a viable panel would take it and recycle it as opposed to just storing it on fire.
Okay. He can't assume. I mean, I would assume is not what I want from an expert witness. I want what's going to happen to the panels.
That's operational. I can speak to the...
I understand. I'm just saying.
And so we do have, you know, in the submittal materials, the decommissioning plan that says what will be done with things when the site is decommissioned, also talks about inspecting the facility periodically and repairing and replacing. You know, so those are included in the report.
Okay, but that's the decommissioning plan. That's not during normal operations.
Something gets hit by lightning, somebody hits it with a Kubota tractor, something like that.
There's also a part of the submittal process is a manual for how, you know, how the site will be maintained and it includes periodic inspections and I believe it says...
It's like annual on a lot of the stuff.
At least annual. And let's ask...
I would just make this comment. I serve on the planning board.
No, no, no. I get it, but I don't want you to say assume because you won't be here if there's a problem.
And if they've stored them on site, that'll be a violation of the condition and you can pull them. So I mean, it's simple enough to say, I do not want them... And that's the way... They won't be stored there.
Got it. But what I'm trying to establish is there's no expectation that the landfill is going to be used for any of this. You say you can put it in a landfill that it's clean to go. That is not a permissible use of the landfill in this region, so.
That's not a problem. This is not the only place they're not allowed, so they are recyclable and it is...
As long as they get shipped and they're taken care of, that's fine. I just want to establish that the expectation is not they're going to get thrown in a dumpster to haul it to the landfill.
That is correct. They will recycle a facility that is specialized in solar.
Great. So going... So going down the electrical, okay, with this design of... Is it a transformer?
Would it have a transformer?
Is it a transformer?
This will have multiple transformers in the substation and it'll have smaller transformers scattered throughout.
But those are transformers. I was an aerospace engineer, so...
Right, well, the transformers just changed the voltage.
Got it. I know.
The inverter changes from DC to AC, so each transformer, each inverter would have a transformer.
Okay, but is it similar to the design that's being used in Moyoc right now?
I'm not familiar with the design, but it's familiar with the design that's being used. There's 8,000 megawatts in North Carolina that's already online and it would be... It's very similar to that design. It's already 8,000 megawatts in North Carolina connected and generated during the day now, so it's not going to be any different than those designs.
Are you aware... How often do you have problems with these transformers failing? Do they... Can they explode? Do they explode? Yeah, what makes up a transformer, I guess? You're collecting energy, right? It's all... It's rating in DC and getting converted to AC to go out through the transmission lines. Is that correct?
Yeah, the transformer is basically made up of two coils of wire, one for the high voltage, one for the low voltage. They have different number of turns on them and they're connected with steel cores. So the conductors are wrapped around the steel core. Those coils, they're three phases, so there'd be three coils. And that's... And they're just wrapped... They're immersed in a transformer fluid that conducts the heat away. There's obviously losses in a piece of copper wire and so that conducts the heat from the conductors to the outside. It'll have radiators on the outside, just like any other transformer, just like any other substation transformer in the county. Just like the ones... Exactly like the ones Dominion uses. I mean, they'll order them from the same people. I mean, it's exactly the same type of transformer.
So how... I guess nutshell, I guess what it sounds like to me, the question I'm trying to ask is how safe are they? Are they safe? I mean, if they explode, are they safe? Are they going to explode a lot? Are they pretty contained? I mean...
Do they explode?
No, there's no explosion. There's... They'll probably be in the neighborhood for 150 MVA transformer and probably in the neighborhood of 4,000 gallons of transformer fluid, which would be equivalent to diesel fuel.
Would you be surprised?
So it's not ignitable like gasoline, but it could burn. And so it... But how... Percentage wise, I'm thinking probably once it's burned in, and when I say that's what engineers, you call it, once it's connected and it's online for a week and there's no problems with it, the life expectancy is 40 years and that's what their design life is. And so the failure rate would be minuscule compared to... These transformers, this technology has been around well over 100 years. They were built transformers in 1800s and I mean, George Westenhouse built them then. So I mean, this is not something new anymore than the rest of the technology is new. This technology is tried and proved. We've been through fires. We've been through hurricanes, tornadoes. We've been through floods and there's been no material impact to the health and safety of any citizen in North Carolina. And we've had them out there for 20 years.
Would you be surprised that we had one blow up?
What, a transformer?
Yes, sir.
No, I wouldn't be surprised. I do transformer analysis and I study gases and transformers. What you do is take a sample of the gas annually and you could... It's almost predictable.
That they blow up?
If they're going to blow up. You can start watching the ignitable gases come into it and they'll... I won't say they blow up, but they could catch on fire. I mean, that's what I saw.
So when is that? How is that detection done? I mean, what would the maintenance... What could we expect that maintenance cycle to be?
Typically, utilities would monitor, not a brand new transformer, they wouldn't necessarily, but after...
This is not a utility.
Okay, I'm saying a typical utility would monitor it after 10 years, then monitor it once a year.
Okay.
Once a year until, you know, till they decided it's in the use, end of life, and then they would take it out and replace it.
So we had one of these go at about the five-year mark?
We who?
Currituck County.
Currituck County owns...
Within this county, three years ago, we had one explode. It blew the lid off the top. It spewed burning oil all over the place. This leads into my vegetation question. Set the grass all on fire that was three feet high.
Correct.
Required a fire response that had to come out and try to put the thing out. The oil was all over the place.
Now, where was this transformer?
Moyoc.
Was it a solar farm?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Identical, it sounds like, to this one. So what I'm trying to figure out is, are we just really lucky? Or was it faulty inspections? Or you said 10 years. Anyway.
I'd say that's typical utility. They would... They start gas inspections after the 10-year mark.
Okay, so...
That's normal predictive maintenance.
So at the 10-year mark, we start inspecting. How often are transformers moved in and out? And I guess the reason I'm... And you may not be the right guy. I'm going to count on you to point me in the right direction.
Okay, and you said how often they're what?
Do they need to be switched out? And the reason I'm saying that, there's four sitting at the Moyoc plant. Not that that has anything to do with this one, but it appears to me we store spares, right?
I doubt there will be a spare for this facility. That would be very unusual.
Okay.
Cuddy, if you want to speak, I need you to come up to the lectern, please.
And I do have some questions.
I did want to add, with the system, any of our solar farms, we do have O and M operations and maintenance team that fully monitor the system on a 24-hour basis. They receive any type of alert that is required on any of our sites.
I think this alert was the explosion, the bright light, and the flames and smoke that came from it. But, okay, I'm sorry. So the... So the point of that team, is that to prevent it from happening or is that?
To prevent it from happening as well as maintaining the site.
Okay, explain to me then how it happens.
I'm unfamiliar on how that could have happened. I'll let him kind of take that for you.
I would ask you to answer that question, but while you do, would you also explain whether transformers are unique to solar farms and also share where we find transformers in our community today?
Well, there's a transformer right out here serving this building and.
Are they everywhere there's electricity?
Yes.
So transformers are everywhere.
They're, they're hung on poles, I probably pass.
Okay.
So they're not unique to solar farms?
And I appreciate that. So, and my counter to that will be, we, we pride ourselves on solar facilities, on they're automated, they're monitored remotely, there's nobody there, and I understand that. Once it's built, it's, it's very low maintenance. That's a blessing, that's a curse. On, you know, the major substations where these types of things are, they're on an all gravel bed and if the, if it explodes and oil drains, the risk is kinda minor. This is 1,000 acres where if it goes off and no one's around, it's gonna take a minute to get, a, a small county like us to get out there and put out what could be a catastrophic event, not for the solar facility, for all the houses on the other end, right? Cause we have a lot of wind here in Kortuck.
Mr. Chairman, are there transformers in neighborhoods?
Of course there's transformers in neighborhoods. I mean, that's how people get their power to their homes. But this facility, because of the, the size of the transformer, will have a spill containment. They're required by law to have a spill containment for that transformer. So if it, if the tank is ruptured, I, I'm just saying this one is, I don't know about the other one, but for this one, it will be required. I've put too many of them in and I have had, put spill containment on. I, I know that's what is required by law. And so this, this facility will have spill containment. So if for some reason the tank ruptures, it's not gonna be fluid all over everywhere, it's, it's gonna go into, into fluid basin. That's, that's, that's by design.
Mr. Chairman, having had this discussion, do you have any concerns about the safety of the proposed solar farm?
I do not. If, 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 in Nash County, and we've got a lot of solar farms, their, their, their policy is for the firefighters is they just contain, if, 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 if the solar farm has allowed vegetative fuel to build up to the point that it's causing a fire, that's on the solar farm. In Nash County, they just, they just make sure that it's contained inside the fence, they do not go inside the fence. If the fire is, is inside the fence, that's where it stays. That's, that's all they, that's all they do. They, they don't open any locks, they're going in and try to put out a fire. If it damages a panel, that's on the, that's on the solar farm. It's their job, it's their insurance, it's their, it's them to, to keep the, the fuel load down low enough so that if there is a grass fire, cause it may not even start there, a grass fire could start anywhere. But if the fuel load is in there, is, is low enough, the grass fire can go all the way through it and it won't, it won't damage anything. So, so it's, it's, it's the solar farm owner to keep the fuel load down.
Right. I, I agree with that. So it's interesting that you say all of that, cause I was actually, I was told that, that identical thing, right? How many firefighter, does Nash County have professional firefighters or volunteer firefighters?
Both, both.
But they've got a significant professional group, right?
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Okay. We're ma, we're manned by volunteers and we struggle to get to structure fires. We also have a lot of wind here. Two weeks ago, we had a model rocket launch that set fire to the grass that almost resulted in forestry having to bring a bulldozer in about 30 minutes, right? It got that bad, that fast because of the wind.
Right.
To suggest that we're gonna wait at the fence line for a raging grass fire to get through to the fence, that will so quickly leave our capability to fight. We will, we will be powerless to do anything. If we, if we did exactly what you said, we would, we would never be able to get it under control.
You know, and I would just say too, you know, and I've responded to some fire calls where the, the transformers on the poles have burst and the whole pole was on fire and it caught the grass around it, so I understand you can have them, but you can have them anywhere.
Well.
Yeah, yeah, no, and the firefighters are gonna have to respond to whether it's in the neighborhood, telephone pole, you know, solar farm, wherever, but I've seen poles on fire, we had to put them out.
The fire at the, the fire at the Moayak site, I was the first law enforcement officer on scene. I got through the gate, I, I'll be honest, there was a little bit of scuffle at the gate when I came up and I told the guy, I said, hey, there's a call for fire. And he said, okay, well, let me get my supervisor so we can get you back there. And I said, when I'm riding in this and I'm wearing this uniform, I'm going back there. So I just went in, fire came out, the, the fire was, the total fire area might have been the, the size of this little platform up here and it was put out fairly fast. The, the vegetation, I will say the vegetation was a little, it was over the height of what it was supposed to be.
Three feet.
At, at that time. But they, our fire department got there, they, they put it out, it was, it was 15, 20 minutes. Once everybody got back there.
You see a lot of transfer, you see a lot of transfer pole fires too, I'm sure.
Tons.
Yeah, your dad, I'm sure, has too.
Oh, yeah, 40 years for Dominion.
Oh, yeah.
All right, well, we're getting a little.
Getting off topic.
Yep.
Any other question?
Yeah, one other question. I'm sorry, my bad.
I was gonna ask you if you had any follow-up.
Where are the panels manufactured?
Say again, please?
Where are the solar panels manufactured?
The manufacturer has not been chosen yet. This, this project is, is, is very immature to the point where you start any type of procurement process. This is, I cannot tell you.
Can we narrow it down, which country?
I would say no. I don't know what's gonna be available in five years. I, I don't know, or four years, whenever they start procurement.
Can somebody speak and assure us it's not gonna come from China?
I, I.
And go on the record with that?
I could let the applicant, if you want the address, I don't know.
Come on up to the, uh, Mike.
As we determine, we haven't determined where we're gonna be purchasing our panels from.
Okay.
But they will be in compliance as other sites have.
Where do you typically get your panels from? That's maybe the better question. Do you usually go try and find US companies to produce them? Do you typically buy them from China?
We source them from numerous places across the country as well as.
What's the answer?
I would just say, I'm not sure it's germane to the reason we're here today, which is the, the four required findings of fact.
It, I'm sorry, I would suggest that it has potential safety issues. Chinese panels have been known to be made with chemicals that are not, are not desirable.
I would have to agree with, with counsel on that point.
Okay. All right, and then we're, I'm curious what's changed that the, the, the panels are now good for 40 to 50 years?
Correct.
And so that's Mr. Chairman.
The typical warranties for, for these polysilicon panels are 25 to 30 years. The manufacturer warrants them for that length of time. That doesn't mean at the end of that period of time, at the end of the warranty, they're not still good panels, but they, they warrant them for specific output for, for that period of time. So as, the longer a panel stays and is, is used, the, the less efficient it becomes. So after 40 years, you would probably be in the 85%. So if it starts off at 100%, it drops down immediately to 99, 98 and a half for the first year and then after that, it's a linear degradation down for, to the end of life. So it, it, in 40 years, it would be like an 85% efficient, but they don't guarantee them, but typical manufacturers, 25 to 30 years, that's all you guarantee you get.
Okay. All right, anything further? All right, thank you very much. Before you jump into your next witness, I'd like to have a five-minute recess. You've been standing for a minute, we'll just catch a break and, uh, everybody stretch your legs, so we'll be back in a few minutes. Thank you. All right, we'll get back, uh, call the meeting back to order then and get going again. So, um, please call your next witness.
Mr. Chairman, that is our initial presentation. What we would like is to reserve the opportunity for rebuttal and summation after, after the public hearing. I do know there are some landowners here, some who, who are a part of the project who would like to speak, some who are here who will not speak.
Okay.
But if we could have, have that time at the end of the hearing, we would appreciate that.
Can I, Mr. Chairman, can I ask, was there somebody coming up here with the, um, the? An animal. Yeah, the animal, that's the sheep?
Well, we do have the Director of Livestock here. If you'd like to hear from him, I can have him come forward, sure, okay.
If you don't mind.
He came.
I mean, you said it, so I just wanted to.
Came all the way.
Yeah.
Good evening, Board. My name is Eric Bronson. I'm the Director of Livestock for Sun Energy One. Just a quick background on myself, I attended four years of school at Montana State University in Bozeman. I studied animal science with a concentration on livestock industry management. I worked throughout the American West from California north to Montana and all the way east to Virginia eventually, uh, over the past seven or eight years. Been around livestock my entire life. I've been with Sun Energy One for two years. We manage about 700 ewes across approximately 1,300 acres of solar sites and I was grazing solar sites for about six or seven years prior to this. So if I can answer any questions, I'd be happy to.
What's the, um, I mean, just like, we'll go total acreages or whatever, like if it's open space of vegetation, whatever, it was 475 acres, so I just was curious, like how many, how many possible sheep on site? How much, I mean, the percentage that they eat of the?
That, uh, so that's a great question and it's a very common question, but that is almost completely dependent on a multitude of factors. One is the age of the site, the condition of the vegetation, uh, it could depend on the soil charac, characteristics. It would be almost impossible to give you like a concrete answer without having all that information brought to me.
Okay. So when you have them on site then, uh, this site would comprise multiple areas. Um, in a situation like this, would you have to move them around to different areas basically to?
Uh, yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay, and then as, as you have them on site, who's the shepherd? I mean, that's, obviously you're managing more property than this.
Yes, sir.
So is there someone local that, that manages the sheep?
Yes, sir. Uh, so for Sun Energy One, we hire a local full-time employee who's on site five, sometimes six days a week. It's a full-time position, that's a completely agricultural position. You are herding sheep full-time.
Okay.
For better or worse.
Right.
But that is a full-time agricultural job and for a community like Kortuck that is losing agricultural jobs, I mean, that, that's one job that didn't exist before and that is a 100% agricultural job.
Okay, so, so for care and feeding, is there a shelter for the sheep that moves around with the herd or the flock?
A shelter?
Right, I mean, are they just exposed to the?
Uh, so the, the panels provide.
I've had, I've had sheep.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't have sheep anymore, if that tells you anything.
Yeah, so.
Goats are worse.
I would tell you, just to give you like a rough number, 95% of the time they are outside. The only time we would pull livestock off-site would be like extenuating circumstances, a hurricane, uh, some other sort of natural disaster, but the rest of the time, the panels actually provide a pretty high welfare environment. I, I ran sheep in Montana for five years and I can tell you that having a solar panel overhead is quite a bit better than spending the winter in Bozeman, Montana. But the panels, especially in an environment like this, high rainfall.
North Dakota.
The wind, um, any number of things, the, the panels actually provide a, a better welfare environment than what you would see in some traditional operations.
Okay. Kevin, does that answer your, your burning sheep question?
No, Kevin, they don't shear the sheep.
Yeah, no, I know, I mean, like I said, I know that a lot of the solar farm companies use them on the western part of state. I physically, you know, rode by one and you've seen them, so I just was curious. So obviously it's now migrated to this way.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. Any questions for Kevin or the staff that may have arisen while jumping to, opening up the public comment? None? Yes, sir?
I have a couple other questions for the applicant, but I don't know who it would.
Tell me what they are.
Start with the attorney, point me in the right direction. So one, one of the challenges that we've had in the past in the county is fasteners not being allegedly not torqued to engineering specs, all right? So they were constructed in phases and then the concept was at some point we'll get around to torking them to specification, right? Hurricane comes in, didn't quite get everything around, we had panels flying all over the place. Reasoning given was they were not torqued to engineering spec. Is that gonna be, that, that would be one of my recommendations for a, a condition of approval would be, at the end of the day, everything's installed to factory spec.
So.
No.
So you're talking about, um, meeting the requirements of?
So specifically, there's a torque requirement on the bolts and the nuts, right?
That, that is correct. And we have a team, we have installers and then we have a.
QA team that comes behind and finishes it off, right?
And then we also have an operations and maintenance team that.
Got it. So the problem was it would be weeks in between when they were quote-unquote installed and we, what, what we're attempting to do is say, you're not gonna use that excuse for if your panels go flying around.
Our new process that we've been utilizing is we actually have our QA team come right in behind the installers.
Okay, perfect.
Okay. Anything else?
All right. Okay, so who's, who's groundskeeping?
Um, well, so Cody's field operations, he doesn't.
Lucky Cody.
And, you know, if you're talking about sheep, but.
We have sheep that we utilize, also we have a, a full landscape team and that's what they are constantly doing is going around to all of our sites and mowing, um, a lot of weed eating and operating mowers.
Okay, so right now you have two cuttings as part of your plan. You're opening, you're open to, and inspections, right? So, so the can, what I'm trying to avoid is the county being, first of all, towards staff, we're gonna get more inspections than once a year, right? Cause, so.
I will say that obviously the grass can't get so high or it starts to affect the efficiency of the panels.
I would completely agree with that statement.
So obviously our goal is to maintain it without a doubt with inside the ordinance.
Okay.
And much more than that.
Okay. Um, already talked about the fires.
I guess to Paul's point, what, what's a typical maintenance cycle? So active season, you've got active grass growth. Do you go into a facility once a month, every other month, every couple of weeks?
Twice a year.
They're saying twice a year.
As far as lawn maintenance, we typically run, I believe it's on a 45 to 60-day schedule.
Okay.
They're, they're constantly rolling around all of our different sites.
Okay.
So it is being maintained more than twice a year, but that's obviously the minimum for the ordinance.
But a minimum is the twice a year, obviously, right?
Correct.
So ordinance is giving you minimum, but you're gonna be on the ordinance.
No.
But that's what he just said.
He just said that they go in about every 45 to 60 days.
Okay. The ordinance is, the grass can't get tall.
To a certain height.
Yeah, but I mean, minimum cuttings, I mean, but, but, okay.
My point is the ordinance says you can't get long grass, right? It's not our problem to maintain it, they need to do that.
If his grass goes two feet in 30 days, an officer's gonna cut him off.
Got it.
Okay. Anything else?
Or the sheep have to eat it.
Yeah, or the sheep.
Or the sheep will eat it, right.[1685.13]
Water trucks. So during construction, what is the plan for dust, uh, abatement?
So in projects in the past, we do have water trucks that run up and down the main paths around the project that are just consistently putting out water to help assist with keeping the dust down.
Okay, and what happens if the trucks break?
If the trucks break down, then we could utilize a rental truck if we needed to.
And what can we expect to go on in between when the truck breaks and the rental arrives?
We would do our best to keep dust at a minimum.
Okay. And there is now a nuisance ordinance in place in the county. Lessons learned. Too much dust. You'll be cited. That's all.
Okay. Uh, there are roads mentioned specifically in here, and I'm guessing those are your access roads that we're talking about keeping dust control down. Um, do you guys do anything with those? Do you gravel those? Do you put it, kind of, any kind of aggregate, or are they left just soft roads? I mean, you, you've indicated that you know that this area is very low. It has a lot of wetland.
Our goal would be to make them like a compacted-type pathway, so that they can be driven on. I know one of the concerns was to ensure that if our truck could be driven on...
Right, and that, that was my point. We've had, in the past, instances where we cannot get back there if we needed to. And, uh, you know, it's all well and good to let, let your, let your product burn if, if that's the case, but, you know, obviously, we're not gonna do that. It's, it's about health and safety to our residents and the surrounding homes. So how do you compact that earth? Are you putting something down in addition to just driving on it with a, with a couple dump trucks? Or are we talking about an aggregate? Or some sort, something to firm that up for the future? I mean, you're gonna have to get in and service these things as well.
Correct. Um, usually, we use, you know, different types of equipment to compact it down, and then if we see the need for additional materials, we'll bring those in.
Okay.
That is correct, yes. We were looking at the weight of those recently.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, if there's nothing further, I will, uh, move into, uh, public comment. And, uh, I'll call it the first person who signed up. That is Nathan Reynolds. And we do need your name and address for the records, Mr. Reynolds. Thank you.
Uh, my name is Nathaniel Reynolds. I live at East, 877 East Ridge Road. It's my home. Also, recently, just started a, a business, so kind of unfortunate that I've had to spend this time here. Y'all guys actually did quite a lot better asking some of the questions than I anticipated. So render some of the things that I brought up moot, but nobody is asked about the photovoltaic heat islands. That there are over 100 studies now that you can usually just do a Google search, looking up photovoltaic heat island. You'll come back with all kinds of data. Um, University of Arizona has a study, Maryland University has a study. There's plenty that you can find out there. But the first site that I came up to was a weather.com site, uh, website, and it says solar energy contributes to climate change. Some studies find. That came out November 3rd, 2015.
Testimony in a quasi-judicial hearing is limited beyond opinion.
It is limited to experts.
Ma'am, I have my receipts, if you would like.
Well...
So do you hold any licenses in the state of North Carolina?
Ma'am, I do not.
Um, and so I would just submit to the board.
Okay, can I just provide all the sources, please?
Hang on, hang on one second. Hang on one second. Let me just calm this right down. Nathaniel, you can, you can make statements. We cannot necessarily consider those statements because you've not qualified yourself as an expert witness. When these people come up and they, they tender themselves based on their, their knowledge and expertise in a particular field and have...
I'm a resident, and I can tell you then, from my expert witness, there is a family of bald eagles that live on that property. Have y'all considered that?
You can tell us these things, and that's fine.
I'll provide evidence if you'd like.
If you have an opinion about it, you can, you can voice that opinion or concern. However, as an evidentiary matter, we cannot consider that.
Okay.
So, but, please do raise your concerns with us. We want to hear from...
My concerns are that nobody's considered the, that there is evidence, plenty of evidence, since early 2014, that large-scale solar farms create heat islands. They contribute, uh, an NIH, PubMed NIH study said that they found three to four degrees Celsius increase in temperatures, ambient temperatures, around these solar farms. Has this county done any kind of investigation in the solar farms that exist now, what the temperatures were before, what they are now? And have y'all even done just currently, look at the, what the temperatures are in and around the solar fields and compare it to what it is in and around natural habitat nearby? I'll give it back to y'all.
Okay, thank you, sir. James Mounds, are you still in the room? Hello again.
Hello, sir. I have a lot more questions than I do answers after I've, uh, seen what I've seen today. So I apologize for, uh, not having two weeks to prepare this statement. Here we are, trying to use a thousand acres of land for useful solar panels and justify it by page two of the application, section five, for Sun Energy that was on the agenda. It states, "A four-bedroom, two-bathroom home was sold in June of 2013 at a price of $250,000 prior to the construction of a solar facility, and was sold again in July 2018 for $276,500 after the construction of the solar facility, thereby attaining a $26,500 more in revenue." Basically, they're saying this has no effect on home prices. They're wrong. Are we going to really say it makes no difference what is located near a home, doesn't change what its value will be?
Not offering testimony.
So, so is a three-bedroom home on a same-sized lot on the water worth the same as the one next to the one with solar panels? Is that what we're gonna say today? Why don't we add a reasonable study to this? How long did it take the average four-bedroom, two-bathroom home stay on the market that was next to farmland before selling? And how long did a four-bedroom, two-bathroom home located next to these solar panels stay on the market prior to selling? Also, are we going to continue to just let people's vehicles become damaged by the dirt and debris during the construction and maintenance, especially during inclement weather? These construction vehicles used are leaving dirt and debris in the roadway, then tossed up on, up by a street sweeper for people's personal vehicles to have paint damage. Who's paying for that? When solar panels eliminate my electric bills, don't take a thousand acres of once-farmland, have longevity, pass profitability. We can talk about this again. Don't get me wrong. I would rather have a thousand acres of solar panels than I, than I would the homes. And it's honestly sad that people of Currituck are stuck debating between farms, solar, let me clarify, solar farms or another thousand homes. So please, Board, don't make me regret standing up here opposing this, and we end up with another FOST homes in, in a few months instead. Thank you.
But, Mr. Mounds, that's what could exactly happen. Another use of this is that it could become all homes, that thing which you have spoken against. Yeah, and, and it, it's a very real possibility because the farmers that farm this land are not wanting to farm this land anymore. And, uh, so how do we deal with that? How do you say to that farmer that's owned this land for generations deep? You can't, yeah, you can't, you can, you don't, you know?
I encourage my younger generation and myself to come forward and begin to get back to work, to do what we came here to do.
Right.
That's what I tell people all the time. It's time for us to get back to work.
As a point of clarity, in Shawboro, you're not gonna have a FOST development.
Well, that's, this is true.
It's not a full-service district.
Right.
You're not gonna have that kind of density.
But it would be a pretty sizable ag neighborhood, you know, in conservation, so... But it could be a lot of homes, so, thank you, Mr. Mounds. Uh, Robert Griffin, still here?
Good evening, sir. Good evening. I'm Robert Griffin, 436 Poplar Branch Road in Poplar Branch. And I fully support what's being brought to you this evening. I am representing one of the property owners as it is in my family, as one of the sites here. I believe I was the initial contact by Sun Energy in 2014 for this project. So this has been a long time coming. The mid-Currituck Bridge comes to mind. I'm also not naive. We had a public hearing here in 2017 that was going through some of this same material. And a decision had been reached before anybody spoke that evening. The public hearing was held simply because it had to be held by law. But there was a motion that clearly had been put together long before anybody spoke, and that decision was fully reached on a matter having to do with this. So I understand that sometimes things are not what they seem. But I certainly hope that you have listened to your planning staff, the fact that this group has followed what our planning board recommends. They have met the requirements that the county has stated, best I can tell. And so it would seem to me that this is something that should pass. I would also comment that a statement was made that a majority of this would not be open space by a member of this board, but, um, I'm a math teacher, and there's 1,075 acres on this land, of which 475 would be comprised by panels. I'm pretty sure that's less than a majority, being solar panels. That's what the math says. So I'm not sure who expert witnesses are and are not, but I do appreciate people, when they make a comment, they do know what they're talking about. I thank you for your time, and I fully support that this project should go forward.
Mr. Griffin, Mr. Griffin?
Yes, sir.
I stand corrected. When I heard how many acres were gonna be covered in panels, I agree that that math did not work out to a majority. I'm curious, though, when you're talking about the previous hearing where this project was discussed, I'm curious when that was?
2017.
We've never talked about this project.
We've talked about Sun Energy, and having a project in Shawboro, okay, you're correct.
Thank you.
You're correct. It was having a moratorium.
Right.
That's correct.
Right.
That was a different matter.
Yes, sir.
But it was very much relevant to what we're talking about today. That's my point. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your time. All right, that is all that I had signed up. Was there anyone else who'd like to speak this evening to public comment? Did you come up, uh, earlier and get sworn in?
I did not, but I'd be happy to do that now.
Okay. Would you please come up to the lectern? And there should be a bobble right under the front there, if you would. Yes, ma'am. If you raise your, uh, right hand, please. Thank you. Do you solemnly swear that testimony you're about to give will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you, and I need your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Angela Reynolds. I live at 877 East Ridge Road. Um, so I'm one of the adjoining properties. I'm a real estate agent, licensed here in North Carolina. I sell real estate here in this county. I'm not an appraiser, but I do know what I'm talking about. And so I'll tell you that when the appraiser, nice gentleman, stood up here and talked to you guys, I felt a little insulted because any appraiser who stands up and says that a solar panel field that is 1,000 acres of land isn't going to affect the adjoining properties is completely misleading. Because I sell real estate on a day-to-day basis, and I can tell you, without a doubt, as a Realtor, if I have a property across the street from a solar panel field that...
Uh, I understand she's not an expert.
I understand that I would not be considered an expert because I'm not an appraiser. But I can tell you that I walk through many homes with clients. I know what people moving into Currituck and moving within Currituck want, and I can guarantee you, they don't want fields of solar panels. I also know that, in my personal experience with my personal property, that I would not want to look across the street and see a sea of, of solar panels. However, that's not something I can control. So what I want from the council would be to consider that there are quite a bit of people in this county that are not represented, that are not getting heard. And we didn't have two weeks to prepare. We didn't have a sea of experts to back us up. But I can tell you honestly, all you have to do is go on the Facebook websites, the Moayak website, the Currituck County website, and you'll see that these people do not want the solar panels. They don't want it here. And so by doing this, you're literally not even listening to the constituents that you're representing. So unfortunately, I do not agree with the proposal, and I can't agree with the proposal. Because as I know it, in my personal life, every single day, I can tell you that this will affect our county. And what will happen is, in 30 years, when this large chunk of 1,000 acres is available, all the surrounding properties will have been depressed for that thousand, for the 30-year lease, or however long they have it. And then, when that surrounding area is consumed, at the end of this leaf, lease, those acreages that become available then, in the 1,000 acres of solar farm, will have been basically banked, like they were talking about, and then will become available just in the nick of time when the demand is high again. And the problem with that is, everybody surrounding those areas will be suppressed for that 30-year lease. And then, when that 30-year lease is up, we will not be able to compete with whatever development they decide to put in there next. So unfortunately, I don't agree with their expert witnesses, and I 100% refute that these claims won't affect, like, this solar panel will affect our property rates. They will affect our value, 100%.
I have a question for you. How long have you been a Realtor?
I've been in real estate for less than a year. However, I have lived in Currituck County for 12 years, and I am very involved in our community. Currituck Kids is an organization that I've been involved with. Moayak Women's Club is an organization that I've been involved with. You know, what I do as a real estate agent, I touch lots of communities. I know what's happening in the community because that's part of my job. And so I can tell you unequivocally that this will affect people, and it won't be for the better.
Thank you very much for coming up this evening.
I appreciate it.
All right. Anyone else in the audience this evening? All right, seeing none, I will, uh, did we hit one? Oh, there you are, Harvey. What is one, Harvey? Need to be sworn in?
He did.
Yeah.
He came up earlier? Okay, great. So you know the drill. Name and address for the record, please.
I don't hear good, but anyway, I'll talk. My name is Harvey Roberts. I live at 489 North Indian Town Road, Shawboro. I'm 70 years old. I am a professional because I have survived 50 years of farming. I have farmed in, all over Currituck County, Barco, Tolls Creek Road, Moayak, over in Camden, several places. We own property in Prequemans County. I've been, and I've been elected a Soil and Water Conservation District Supervisor for 36 years. I'd like everybody in this audience and on the viewing audience to realize Soil and Water Conservation District Supervisors are part of state governor, governor. We operate under, operate under general statutes. We take the same oath of office to the state of North Carolina as county commissioners do. I take my job serious as a Soil and Water Conservation District Supervisor. We're charged with maintaining soil and water. Also, I've been a drainage commissioner, one of three drainage commissioners on the Hogbridge Ditch. That's the first jury ditch started in Currituck County in 1916. I've been on that jury ditch since 1990, me and three others maintaining that ditch for a lot of the property owners here. Also, the Soil and Water people, I'd like everybody to know, the Soil and Water Office, we get state and federal monies anytime there's a hurricane or a disaster. This money is used where you don't ever see it. But we have spent, we've received and spent over $500,000 in the last five or six years. The North Carolina Legislature appropriated $36 million to be used statewide last year. Currituck County got $248,000. We've let all the contracts out except for 4,000. I'm gonna get to the solar farm in a minute.
I'm waiting for you to get to solar because that's the reason you're up here.
I'm getting to the solar, but I want everybody to understand how important drainage is. I am not opposed to the solar farm at all. I believe in individual property rights. My sister and I own 300 acres of land. We are even considered possibly some of our land, the less productive land, to put it in solar panels. I'm not here to speak against solar panels. It's an individual right, what people want to do. I'm 70 years old. The older people know me since I was born. A lot of the younger people, they've known me since I was a baby. We all go to the same church. We're all family and friends, but my concern is, Currituck County is not enforcing the rules and regulations. You have some stuff with 25-foot setback that is over five acres. It's supposed to be maintained once every three or four years. That's not being done. I just...
Harvey, I gotta, I gotta stop you. We are here for a public hearing on a solar farm. If you, if you want to speak to that at public comment at a regular meeting before the meeting starts, that is absolutely your prerogative.
My, my statement is, on the solar farm, we've got all these developments in solar farms. Nobody is requiring in, in, uh, nobody is guaranteed in the Soil and Water Office that they're gonna maintain their ditches on their property.
Okay.
Or, so this is a public hearing. Is Currituck County...
That is pertinent.
Is Currituck County a public hearing? Are you gonna maintain the drainage on the inside of that property, on both sides of the ditches or next to all farmland? We can't stop up farming. That's the problem the Soil and Water Office is getting now. We're getting complaints about houses, solar farms going in, and the county's not enforcing the rules, and they're not cleaning their ditches out. I have talked to some of y'all individually. Our Soil and Water Office has tried to get a meeting with y'all since January.
All right, Harvey.
You're blowing us away. I want the public to know that.
Harvey?
That you're not listening to the Soil and Water Supervisor.
You're out of order now. Listen, you have stated a valid concern that these ditches be maintained on this property while it's under their care. It is a very valid point. I wrote it down. We can make it a condition of their approval, that they will maintain those ditches when they come back up to rebut this. But we're not here for you to air whatever laundry you think you have a grievance against. That is a very valid point that you made, and I would appreciate if you would stick to what we're dealing with here in this minute, at this moment, which is a solar farm.
Okay. I want to give you an example of the Moayak... Okay. I want to give you an example. Up to Moyoc, they got a big solar farm coming. Kevin, you saw it. They weren't maintaining the ditches. They were watering nearby on the highway. I had to have a meeting with two Department of Transportation people. Who got the ditches cleaned out? Who got the driveways blocked, unblocked? The Soil and Water Office, not Currituck County, the Soil and Water Office had to do it. So the Soil and Water people want to guarantee that these drainage ditches are gonna be maimed like they were when they were farming. That's my comment.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Anyone else this evening?
Chairman, I think Harvey's comments are great.
Right.
But, but part of why we route these plans to the soil, to Dylan specifically, that's something that I think Dylan needs to-
Well, and Dylan did chime in.
Yeah, there's-
He made his comments, right, right.
I did, I did. But that should be addressing.
Well, I, yes, thank you. So-
I think you got one more.
We do. But at, at the end of the day, no one that has come before this board at this moment is an, is an expert witness, and their testimony cannot be considered as, as one of the four findings of fact. However, suggestions may be rise out of that, such as drainage ditches and things of that nature, so.
Mr. Chairman, just while we're on drainage ditches, I'll tell you real quickly, in your ordinance, in your solar ordinance is a requirement that we're responsible for maintaining all drainage ditches adjoining or traversing the site to keep the ditches free and clear of drainage impediments, and a further requirement to provide access easements for certain drainage areas.
Right.
And so your ordinance includes that, and we will be required to meet that, and we will.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
My name's Joseph Etheridge. I'm 882 Shawboro Road.
Did we, did we swear you in earlier?
Yes, sir.
Okay. What was your name again? I'm sorry.
Joseph Etheridge.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm one of the landowners involved, and I just wanted to commend the board and the Moyoc project. What was it? The Oak, Sol, Oaks Crest?
Oaks Crest.
Yeah. That we got a seven to O unanimous okay on that. And I would specifically like to thank Mr. Beaumont for being the commissioner who made the motion for it to be accepted. And I would appreciate consistency tonight on this one, too. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir. All right. I'm gonna go ahead and close up the public comment, and, um, Mr. Ray House, did you want, you said you wanted a five-minute or a few minutes to rebut anything that came up?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I would say, I would like to make some closing remarks, but with your comments and your acknowledgement that, that, you know, there's been no expert testimony beyond what we put forward tonight, then I will just make our, our closing remarks, if that's all right.
Okay, that'd be fine, thank you.
Um, there are four required findings of fact. And we do have the burden of showing with competent substantial material evidence, which is why we've, we've brought all these experts and tendered them to you as experts tonight. And I'll go through the findings. The first is that the proposed solar farm will not endanger the public health or safety. And I would tell you first that your technical review committee, your professional staff, determined that the application complies with the UDO requirements. You heard from engineer Chris Sandifer and engineer Jacob Dooley that there are no health or safety concerns, even after our significant dialogue on those issues. And, you know, you have previously made that finding for other solar farms that are no different than this farm, and there is no contrary evidence in the record. The second finding is that the proposed solar farm will not injure the value of adjoining or abutting land, and that it will be in harmony with the area in which it's located. And there, you heard, you know, in your staff report, again, from your professional staff on that point, you heard from appraiser Nick Kirkland, that there's no, he studied the site, and there's no impact on the value of adjoining or abutting properties, and that it is in harmony with the area. You have also, as a board, decided that a solar farm is a special use in this district, and that's tantamount to a legislative finding that this is in harmony with the area, and there's no contrary evidence in the record. The third finding is that the proposed solar farm will be in conformity with your land use plan. That was mentioned in your staff report, that, you know, this complies with the Imagine Currituck policies. Again, appraiser Nick Kirkland indicated compliance with the policies. And we discussed the open space issue and the fact that the great majority of the farm will be not in solar panels, only the 475 out of more than 1,000 acres in panels. And the final finding is that the proposed solar farm will not exceed the county's ability to provide adequate public services. You heard from several folks that there's little demand for services from, from a solar farm. There's no need for water or sewer, no kids in your schools, no social service needs. You know, your, your staff in their staff report indicated compliance with your UDO, and you heard no contrary evidence. I would also tell you that, you know, the obligation of a proponent, an applicant in a case like this is not, they don't have to answer every potential question. They have to provide reasonable evidence that the findings are met. What the courts have said is that, you know, competent evidence is not unsupported or highly speculative claims, and there are unsubstantiated fears. So, you know, you know, considering every potential solution, you know, what if aliens land? We don't, we're not obligated to address that. And so I would submit to you that we have met our burden under your ordinance with substantial competent and material evidence, and that we are entitled to the permit as a matter of law. And we would ask, ask for you to please follow the law and issue the permit tonight.
Thank you very much.
Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Can I just ask one question to the applicant?
Absolutely.
It was stated earlier because of this unique area here that there was a comment, would the applicant be willing to put in up to an additional three, additional monitoring wells?
Additional two.
Additional two, excuse me. Would that be acceptable?
So there are three wells.
Three and three.
We'd be willing to put-
There's three, but they're, they're questioning about would you be willing to put a couple more monitoring wells in because of the, you would be, okay. And what did we say? Was it two or three?
There's three.
There's three now.
But there's two on one side of East Ridge, one on the other. So it'd be three on one side of East Ridge, three on the other.
Three additional monitoring, yeah, that's what I thought, okay.
A grand total of six wells.
Yes, so three, so, okay, you'd be, okay, that's fine, that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you for that. Any other further questions for applicant? Mr. Kemp, just while we're on the subject, the residents brought it up. When these guys come forward for an application, what does that process look like? How is the public notified that this is gonna be coming down the pipe? Is there, they have to put signs out at the road, for instance, beforehand and have notice of public hearing? It's open to public comment? They have, they hold meetings with the public? Could you just kind of walk us through that a little bit so that the public can understand? We have a lot of people probably watching tonight.
And a timeframe, probably?
Yeah, and there's a timeframe associated with all that.
Right, it gets, the notice gets published in the paper, I believe, to, I'd have to look it up, but-
I can answer that for you.
Yes, please.
So for a special use permit, once published notice, once a week for two successive calendar weeks, with the first notice between 10 and 25 days before the hearing. And then mailed notice between 10 and 25 days before the hearing, and posted notice at the property at least 10 days before the hearing.
Okay, and then, and we have a mail-out radius from the proposed project area, do we not? It's pretty substantial. Like, we just, we just actually changed that. 1,500?
500 feet.
Right.
Is that-
It was changed for mining operations.
That's what I was saying.
To 1,500 feet.
Okay. So just as people were watching, and it was, it was brought up tonight. It's tough. These things are not exactly designed to favor the public. And, and we're stuck with what the state of North Carolina gives us in many aspects. So it is tough for the public to mount, a concerned public to mount a defense in this situation. And in these types of situations, they would have to hire expert testimony to refute what is brought before us. And, excuse me. So we try and let the public know as best we can, as required by law. And in some cases, we've expanded areas of notification to reach more people so that they could be made aware. Facebook was mentioned. It's certainly on Facebook well in advance of whatever's going on. So if there are people that are concerned, the easiest thing to do is try and get together and, and form a cohesive unit to deal with these things and come forward and put on another case. We have had things successfully stopped before this Board of Commissioners before. And it was because the community got together. And it happened with a SAM on the south end of the county in a not-too-distant pass. So it can happen. It takes a lot of effort, and that's hard to do today, these days, to get people to do that. But you do have options available to you out there. With that said, is there any other questions for the staff on this? Okay. Well, at this point, then I will close the public hearing. And if anyone would like to make a motion, I'd like to take a few minutes to gather their thoughts before they make a motion. We can do that.
Mr. Chairman, I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay. Jumped in first.
I'm sorry, did, I mean, were you getting ready to jump in?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I guess the, the first comment part of the motion is, I believe that the Currituck 2040 Vision Plan, as referenced by the, sorry, the attorney, alludes that the county staff, you know, that their language agrees with, with this project. And I would offer that by the definition of open space, and there is no requirement that the vast majority, or the great majority that was actually used, that's not one of the, the conditions with this. To put it in perspective, this project runs both sides of East Ridge Road just about, I, I mean, and uses up almost all of the available acreage that is in that region. So, Mr. Chairman, I, I feel compelled, and, and that's the difference. This is in a, this is specifically called out in the Imagine Currituck 2040 Vision Plan, whereas Summit Farms, and I would also argue, I also voted for approval for the Grandi Solar Facility. So I'm not completely, but, Mr. Chairman, I move to deny PB 2224 Shawboro East Ridge Solar because the applicant has not demonstrated the proposed use meets the Use Permit Review Standards of the UDO. Specifically, the use will not be in conformity with the Imagine Currituck 2040 Vision Plan, which supports keeping Shawboro area predominantly rural, protecting agricultural and open spaces, and allowing low-density neighborhood, residential neighborhood scales, commercial development. And, and adding to that, the verbiage or the definition of open space that is applicable is space suitable for passive recreation, gardens, or landscaping, which may include areas left in their natural state, trails, ponds, streams, banks, recreation areas, areas of excessive slopes, low-lying areas, marshland, environmentally sensitive areas, required landscape areas, and some government facilities. Such space must be free of automobile traffic, but parking is allowed and readily accessible to all those whom it is required.
I would, before we get further into that, the UDO does call for those to be in allowed use within agriculture in this area.
Agreed, but the Currituck Vision 2040, which is the most recent update, would not, Mr. Chairman. Anyway.
Okay.
That's my motion.
We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second? Seeing no second, motion dies. We have another motion.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion to approve PB 2420, 2224 Shawboro East Ridge Solar Farm because the applicant has demonstrated, demonstrated the proposed use meets the Use Permit Review Standards of the UDO. The use will not endanger the public health and safety. In addition to the three required monitoring wells, they're going to provide three more additional monitoring wells. There will be the buffered standard in the UDO will be met. The stormwater quality will also be met per the stormwater. The use will not inquire, excuse me, the, the use will not injure the value of adjoining or abutting lands. It will be in harmony with the area in which it's located per the certified, for the real estate appraisers' testimony. We're, they're going to be adhering to all the setbacks and buffers in the UDO. It will be a type-two buffer. They will be using the new and existing vegetation. There will be fencing that will be around the area, and it will allow access to the landlocked owner. Number three, the use will be in conformity with the land use plan or other official adopted plans as for G1, low-growth, low-density, keeping the Shawboro rule, the Imagine Currituck policies. And the use will not exceed the county's ability to provide adequate public facilities. There's gonna be no demands on the schools or the water, law enforcement, or other county facilities. And that's my motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
If I could recommend two additions to that.
Okay.
One of them is, although it was stated that they have a QA team that comes behind and torques stuff down to, you know, spec, right behind the installation crew, that that be actually a condition of their approval? Because if they don't say it here, it didn't exist, just because it's in their preliminary plan. So I'd like to see that as a requirement. Mr. Chairman, I'd also like to see a requirement that the panels not come from China.
I don't think we can do the panels from China.
I'm not gonna add that China panel piece, as far as my motion.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask?
Hang on one second for me, please. Just one second. So the applicants here, they have to agree to these conditions. So I need the attorney or maybe, maybe Cody, or both of you to come up, please, as this is an additional condition.
Well, let me just restate, as far as my motion, I, I am not, I am not adding the manufacturer's requirement.
Right, I understand that.
They actually do not have to agree to the conditions. That's with conditional zoning.
They do not? Okay, I thought we had to agree. Okay.
As far as the, the added to my motion regarding the torquing, I believe they, they stated earlier in a comment that they have a procedure that they follow to check that for quality controls.
That was part of their testimony.
Yeah, so I would just be, you know, that's part of their testimony, that they just adhere to that, not that it has to be added.
In the past, Mr. Chairman, there are things that were discussed that were not part of a condition. And that, if they're, they should have no comment agreeing to it, because they stated that.
Well, I believe they agreed to it when they made their statement, putting them wrong about their policies.
But he did bring up on his policies on how they come back and forth at the end, which is on recording that he stated that.
It's not a condition of approval.
It's not a condition of approval, right, and so, uh-
Okay, well, I guess I'll ask the applicant then if a conditional approval, will they provide a-
You don't have to ask the applicant for their-
No, well, I mean, to be, to be provide, as part of my motion, the applicant will provide a torquing standard that they will follow and present, I guess, to-
They'll follow their own policy.
They'll follow and they'll present some documentation that they're doing, the proper torquing.
If I could, if I could, following installation, all fixtures and panels and equipment will be installed to fa, to engineering specifications, specifically with torque.
Okay. Then I will add that then to my motion.
All right.
Because I believe that will be followed, but I'll add that to the motion.
Okay.
Yeah, that's my motion.
Anything further?
I was gonna ask another question, but we answered it. I'm good, we answered it, so I'll, if nobody has any other questions, I'll second his motion.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion from the board? All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed?
Nay.
All right, got it done. Thank you all. Let's take a recess while everybody clears out. I'm sure everybody wants to get up for a minute. All right, thank you all. Let's get back to it. Let's get this meeting finished up. Next up is new business, item one, ordinance amending 11-23 of the Currituck County Code of Ordnances, storage of garbage in the four-by-four area, one of my favorite subjects.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this is following that meeting we had back, I think, in September over at the Maritime Museum, when we discussed issues going on mainly in the four-by-four area with trash, the wild horses eating it, just piling up everywhere. So based on that meeting, I have this ordinance in front of you. There's one typo, which I'll bring to your attention. But basically, the, the first part of the ordinance is there's old zoning districts that are in here, like RO1 and RO2. So RO1 is now the single-family residential outer banks. RO2 is now single-family residential outer banks remote. So I've tweaked that and put the correct zoning district. So that's just kind of a housekeeping matter. Now, as far as the substance, based on that meeting, I have in section 1128- residences containing 10 or more bedrooms, now this is in the S F R, residences containing 10 or more bedrooms shall remove or cause to be removed all solid waste from his or her property at least three times each week during a seven-day period. So there was that.
So, okay, I like that. What is the, what are the penalties? And maybe that's premature to ask, in which case you could continue.
Right, I'll have to, I mean, that's a good question, enforcement of this is...
You can't enforce it.
That is an issue, I mean, that's always an issue, but...
With everything.
With, yeah, and making sure that they do this three times a week, but we can certainly put it in this...
Please finish with that, and then we can have the discussion, I'm sorry.
No, you're fine, okay, enclosure of rollout carts didn't change anything other than the zoning district. So in 1130, that's where most of the changes are, in the, in both districts, each residential unit must have a minimum of four containers, and they cannot exceed 40 gallons in capacity. Each resident, and the typo is in that subsection one, it says one container, four containers. Like, just ignore the one container, if you decide to approve this, you can, in your motion, you can say, as corrected, taking out that one container language. In subsection two, each residential vacation rental unit in the S F O and S F R districts must have a minimum of four containers with a maximum of 10 containers. And one container for each bedroom, excuse me. So you, if there's more than 10 bedrooms, you don't have to have, like, 26 cans, but you need to have at least one per bedroom up to 10. And that's for residential vacation rental unit. So as opposed to residential units, so there's a, that's the difference there between those sections. And then there's a definition of what bedroom means, that was not changed. So, and Ike has pointed out to me in section 116 of that, of our code of ordinances, the enforcement, there's a criminal penalty, they're subject to a misdemeanor and a fine not to exceed $500, civil penalty as well, and may be enforced by equitable remedies. So really, basically, the same, what those things are.
Okay, so your challenge is, ding dong, you didn't take your trash out, we're writing you a $500 fine.
Well, yes, that is a challenge.
So, wow, I didn't rent the house, Bill rented the house, where's Bill? Bill's not here right now. In other words, you got to figure out who you're citing, and it could be the homeowner.
It will be the homeowner, they're ultimately responsible for it.
And I agree with you. I agree with you.
Part of this, I can, I know where you're going, part, when we did this discussion, we brought in the rental agencies that operate up there, and one of the, two people that deliver, or refuse guys up there. So it was with their, their part of this. And 20 is more than willing to step in, as is Brenley, to help.
Okay.
They want the houses clean, at the end of the day. And so hopefully, it's not going to be as big of a deal as we think it is, that is the...
So let me ask you, is three times a week too much?
That was based on their, no, that was based on their suggestions because of how the homes are being used, how many cans, they're actually going out physically placing extra cans there. They're not in containers, you know, boxes to keep them, animal boxes. So they're having their own set of problems, they were having problems with some of the cans being too big. People are going and buying the big wheel-out cans like we have in Whalehead, they can't reach in the bottom to get the trash bags out. So again, that was why I always said a maximum at 40 gallons, so that they could get in them and clean them out.
Okay, right, 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 so it's a smaller can, got it.
Yep, yep, so that's, all of this is the culmination of that discussion we had with them, to get something that made sense, that they could actually enforce.
And how many recyclables are they going to have?
Zero.
Sorry.
So, so anyway, that's how this came about, and it was a pretty good first group of people that were engaged in this, to get this cleaned up.
So is the mechanism, trash bags are loaded into a truck?
Yeah.
So everything's got to be in a bag?
Yeah, and they, actually, when they come pick up, a lot of them bring their own heavy-duty bags, and they'll re-bag them, so they're double-bagged and throw them in a truck. So like, when they came to my house, they might take two cans and put them in one giant
Got it.
45-gallon construction bag or whatever, 60-gallon construction bag, so.
And I do want to make a point as well, I just realized this, so this is an ordinance that would require a unanimous vote, so it cannot be voted upon tonight, it cannot be adopted tonight.
Cannot be adopted, we have to bring it back for a second.
Exactly, yes, and when we bring it back the second time, it can be voted on by a majority, but the first time around, it has to be unanimous.
The other thing that's kind of with this, but not kind of, is one of the things that I think I asked you, I asked somebody, I can't even remember now, that I don't think we've done a real good job messaging to vacationers that anybody can use the convenience site in their four-wheel drive. So there are property owners that don't know that their guests and family, who don't have the sticker, right, can go dump, that anybody can go dump at the waste site. So that, I think we need to do some kind of, either a press release or some kind of a better job in messaging, you know, because the more trash we can get off the beach...
Would it be good to have a sign at the convenience center?
There could be a sign as you enter the four-wheel-drive area.
Okay.
Yeah, or in a park.
Right.
A lot of people go to the park, you know, it's a good message area, the mailboxes by the fire department.
Every home, put a big sign right by them.
Right.
I mean, you know, that could be something that the rental companies do to help, I mean, that could be part of the packet that they get.
Yeah, they could.
And they probably want to.
They would be involved, they would be on board with that, too, whether it's magnets on the refrigerator, whatever.
We could have them fly that plane across instead of saving on your insurance.
But easily, easily, the park is an easy area. We also own property across from the fire station where we could place another sign, everybody's up by the...
Hey, they go there to get ice.
Exactly.
That is true.
Even though it's not a business.
Right, nonprofit. No, this is a simple motion to...
Well, we can't, can't do anything.
No, well, we can vote on it tonight, it has to come back again.
Yeah.
It's a simple, because she may not be here at the next meeting, next time will be a simple motion.
Chairman, I'll move for approval.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Change, taking out the one container.
Change as corrected as she said.
Okay, in all seriousness, she made the motion.
I made the motion, move for approval, with the one change.
With the change, you made the second, okay, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, clean that up a little bit. Okay, next one, resolution authorizing participation in North Carolina health insurance pool, Ike?
Mr. Chairman, we were always attempting to find ways in which we might reduce or at least maintain costs for employee benefits, and at the same time, to see whether we can enhance those benefits for employees. You will recall in the current budget year, because of the increased cost for health insurance for county employees, we were required to modify our former benefit level of 80/20 plan to a 70/30, and some other modifications which were necessary in order to alleviate the increase that was presented to us by our carrier. Within the last few months, another opportunity has arisen that gives us the chance to reduce our expected increase from a 19.2% increase that we saw today if we go to an 80/20 plan like we used to have. And so what we have before you now is the opportunity to join NCHIP, North Carolina Health Insurance Pool, which is a health insurance pool program. Health Insurance Pool Insurance Program, that currently is comprised of 25 units of local government in North Carolina. It is a self-governing pool, so each of those 25 member units currently have a member on the Board of Directors and actually oversees and operates and maintains the insurance plan. They have quoted to us by going to a 80/20 plan with co-pay, a 1% to 3% increase from what we are currently paying, as I said, versus the 19.2% for the same kind of plan that we were quoted today from our current carrier. And in any event, even if we were to maintain our current plan, it looks like the percentages would be higher than 1% to 3%, and not as good a plan or opportunity as NCHIP will provide for us. So we presented this to you at your retreat. The first step was for the NCHIP Board of Directors to review our claims experience. They did that, they found us to be a good addition to the pool program. Their Board of Directors last month approved our entry into the plan. This step, next step is now for this board to adopt this resolution that authorizes the county's entry and participation into this health insurance pool, and authorizes the county manager to execute the documents necessary for our joining. We will also get a member on the Board of Directors to govern this pool program. As we presented you at the retreat, we still think this is a solid and a very good way for us to proceed with providing a better health insurance plan to our employees, which will be administered by Blue Cross, North Carolina Blue Cross Blue Shield, and be able to pretty much maintain our current payment for health insurance for our employees.
I'm going to motion for approval.
All right, you have some...
I gladly suck in that.
Harvey Roberts, second. All those in favor? Any opposed? All right, thank you. All right, next up is board appointments for the Whalehead Stormwater Service District Advisory. Got a couple people to reappoint and appoint a new one on there, so since that's my district, I'll jump on that one.
Let me, real quick, okay, there is one complication with Tim Bostaf on the stormwater.
Which is?
He's on the fire EMS, too. They changed it.
More than one.
I didn't think we did.
We did, they can do more than one, yes.
Two, yeah, yeah, I thought we had to, okay, thank you.
Rebecca, can I, just, I got a message that Harvey left his code in here, and his car keys are in, and he's at the back door and can't get in.
Tell him the meeting should be over in like 30 minutes or so, we'll be fine. Please take care of Harvey.
Okay, thank you, Rebecca, call duty, all right. Yes, I'm going to move to approve the Larry Queen, Jill Cummings, and Tim Boss staff to fill the unexpired term of George Mears.
Second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Consent agenda, any questions on the consent agenda or comments?
Move for approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, I'll recess, the regular Board of Commissioners meeting, and move into a special meeting in the Tours and Development Authority for some Tours and Development Authority budget amendments. Any comments or questions or concerns on the budget amendments, they were pretty straightforward. Thank you, I'll second that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, have a motion to adjourn the T D A.
Make a motion to adjourn the T D A.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
And now we'll go into a special meeting in the Ocean Sands Water and Service Sewer District Board for budget amendments for that organization. 174, and that was pretty straightforward, for maintenance supplies, hydrants.
Motion for approval.
Thank you, I'll second that, all in favor?
Aye.
Have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All right, can I have a second?